Good morning. I'd like to call this November 20th regular meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors to order. If I could ask everyone in the audience to put your cellphones on silent or vibrate. We're going to start the meeting this morning with indication by Pastor Tony, and if you would remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to pray for you. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, I just thank you. I come before you just with a grateful and thankful heart full of gratitude for our great nation. Father, I ask that you would just have we, the people, continue to participate in this particular form of government that we call the American experience. So, Father, I lift up this meeting to you and each one of our supervisors and those gathered here today, and I ask, Father, that your divine wisdom would be here in all of the discussions and the decisions and the votes that take place, that they would be beneficial for all of the citizens of Mojave County. Father, we just thank you again for all your wonderful blessings over our county, our cities, our country, and, Father, that we would just continue to look to you. I ask you to be with all of our first responders and our hospital staff and our schools, and just all of those people that serve our community that also need you in their lives. We just thank you so much, Father, for all that you do and continue to bless us. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you, Father.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A347. Looking for a motion in action to call for an executive session to be held on December 4th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A347 to discuss items noticed on the agenda within Astry.
So moved.
For that motion and second, all approved. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Official business to come before the board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Esplem?
Nothing to the report to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee and/or legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended, in Phoenix, the CSA Medium County Caucus, followed by the CSA Board of Directors, and then the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission held its monthly meeting or quarterly meeting. I attended that.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you very much. I too attended the CSA Medium Size Caucus, Medium County Caucus, and the CSA meeting. One of the interesting things that happened during the Medium County Caucus was a hydrogen briefing from AZ Kane, which is an organization. It's the Center for an Arizona Carbon Neutral Economy. They said by 2040, did they say? 2040, to be carbon neutral, and they went on about hydrogen. And it's a good thing they told me that they weren't an advocacy group, because I'm pretty sure they were an advocacy group. So, that was interesting, to say the least, and that's it for now.
Thank you. Supervisor Ghul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson? Thank you. Myself, as far as an update, just to keep peoples aware of what's going on with the Governor's Water Policy Council, the recommendations from both the Assured Water Supply Subcommittee and the Rural Groundwater Subcommittee are being finalized by those two subcommittees and then the Policy Council as a whole. And then we'll have to see what legislation comes out of that, I would assume, and with conversations with our state representatives here from Mojave County. All prior bills to do something on rural groundwater have come from Mojave County, so I would suspect that our representatives are going to be a part of introducing legislation. I don't know exactly if it's going to be one of our representatives, but I would hazard a guess, and I know that we have Senator Brelly here. So, thank you for your continued efforts on our groundwater and on the river water as well. Thank you. We have no high ground report this morning, I'm told, so we're going to move to the county manager's report. Manager Elters?
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. No county manager's report today.
Very good. We'll move to the call to the public. We have several people signed up to speak, first being Armin Stance. Stange?
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. We got a little problem. 4349, 4351, he is distributing his junk all over the neighborhood, and he's dropping it off at 4349, 4360 Infantry, and 4201 Community Eva. That's the first problem we have. Second, we have drug dealings going on like never before. 4201 Community Eva, they have a steady flow 24/7 dealing drugs. Something needs to be done about their property. It needs to be obeyed, since Massna is in the slow lane. Well, I guess we all do it on the slow line. And Chuck DeChazier got on the fast lane. I don't know how he did that, but it's great. At least someone got on the fast lane. You know, I think we should do everybody on the fast lane. And then, what I got to hear is the Catholic Church bought Motel 66 on Route 66. So, they are trying to, I don't know what, but the rumor is they put illegals in there. We don't need this here. I think the county needs to look into it and put a stop to it. You know, we don't need illegals here. We have enough illegals already coming across the border, military-age combatant. So, that's an invasion of a sovereign nation. Thank you.
Chris Redarte?
Christopher Redarte, Mojave County taxpayer. "When the righteous increase, the people rejoice; but when the wicked rule, the people groan." Proverbs 29:2. Ladies and gentlemen, how often have any of us truly considered the value of election integrity? Does anyone really understand our vote is our voice? How vital it is to preserve this precious right? Our founders had a pretty good idea when they wrote and signed the Declaration of Independence. In part, here's what they had to say. "When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation." That's our vote. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." Our vote. "That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government." Again, that's our vote. "When a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object invinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, is their duty, to throw off such government, and to provide new guards for their future security." Again, that's our vote. "Here's a simple six-point plan to safeguard our vote and to ensure election integrity. In-person voting in small neighborhood precincts. Voter ID required. No more motor voters, no mail-out ballots, except for absentee ballots requested in writing by the voter. One day voting on Election Day only, and paper ballots counted by hand in the precincts where cast. In a constitutional republic, our vote is our voice. If we lose it in 2024, it is lost forever. Mojave County, the time is long overdue. We can be a beacon of freedom for the rest of the state by instituting real election reform and real election integrity for we, the people, starting with a hand count in 2024. Thank you."
Don Bishop? Quarter. Don Bishop?
Don Bishop? My name is Don Bishop, and I went to school when you had to get 98 out of 100 to get an A, you know. But now I'm back to C because I'm old. But I want to tell you right now that the signature as a firewall is not reliable or ever allowed again. You will be sued, and a judge will tell you that you can't use it as anything anymore. And because of that, it's all over the internet that, right now, thieves are using your signature, not a copy, your signature to write checks. They're getting billions of bucks. So, every envelope you send out, right now, can have your signature on it, and you never put it there. And it's your signature. In fact, it might even be better than your signature, because when you're in a hurry, you're writing wrong, and they'll throw away that signature, and they'll have five of yours to point out that this is yours. See how we got three of them? So, the signature is gone. I can tell you that right now. I can give you an idea of how to do this, but I think you should have a bunch of people that are pretty bright, sit down, even AI, and figure out a way to do this. But my idea is to have a number on the envelope, a number on the ballot, and a secret number that you can't see on the ballot. That way, they all have to come together. And when you're counting, I don't care how you're counting, a machine or whatever, you should just have a simple camera. When the guy gets done writing it, you take a picture of it. When you get 100, you take the chip out, put it in a plastic bag, 1 to 100, put it in the safe. When somebody's counting, you can tell them, if you do any changes on this, we could look at it on the chip. We can see if you dotted a square that was empty. We can see that you changed something, so don't try it. And that's so simple. Just a camera, bam, you take the picture. It's got the number of the, on the ballot. You take the chip out after you get 100 or 200 on a chip. You put it in a plastic bag, and you can always check it. Or you can count the chip and the ballots at the same time. You could actually go back to the machines. However, if you go back to machines to count the ballots, I suggest you should have three companies at every store. In other words, three different companies with three different machines. And if you think anything's going wrong, you can take a pile and take it over to the other machine and see if they come out right. But let's have competition. You have three machines, you have three, and you put some ballots in one machine, one in the other. Or you can do the hand counting. But hand counting, there's a lot of ways to cheat. You know that as well as I do. Somebody can just say, three, I don't want cheating any, oh, did I just say?
Thank you, sir. Kenny Works?
That was it?
Three minutes. Yes, sir. Thank you. Three minutes. Three minutes. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Kenny Works. Thank you for speaking today. Appreciate it.
Good morning. Kenny Works, Hock, Arizona. I'm here this morning to talk about unrest. "They regard me as an uneducated barbarian," declared Adolf Hitler. "Yes, we are barbarians. We want to be barbarians. It is an honorable title. We shall rejuvenate the world. This world is near its end. It is our mission to cause unrest." Seems like he's caused unrest even after his death. Seems like all we've had since World War II is unrest. I prefer peace, myself. "In my encomp, it must be addressed always and exclusively to the masses." He's speaking about trained intelligence or the less educated masses to be, have the propaganda pointed at. "All propaganda must be popular, and its intellectual level must be adjusted to the most limited intelligence among those it is addressed to. Consequently, the greater the mass it is intended to reach, the lower its purely intellectual level will have to be." I think in order to have peace as opposed to unrest, which seems to be the modus operandi of politics, Carl Schmidt said, "Politics, the definition of politics, is friend against enemy, which in itself is unrest." I think in order to have peace, we're going to have to eliminate that word, "politics." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scotty McClure?
Scotty from Bullhead. I see you guys were in there again on the fairgrounds, number 57. I remember two or three years ago, I asked for an audit three times. Hopefully, you guys did one. Apparently, you did. I got what I asked for. Are you going to report out on this? I don't know if you guys finished it up again, but I'm glad you finally may have come to a solution. And here's another one I asked for, for you guys to, remember when the Minor Havasu paper and a whole bunch of newspapers got bought out all the way from Wickenburg, and I asked you guys to stop it? Now, here's the thing in the paper at 11:15, 23. "Changes coming to Minor." They're going to do it one day a week now. They're shutting down the three-day-a-week edition. If you don't have a computer, you're not reading the paper. And I'll guarantee you Lake Havasu's next, or Bullhead's next. What do you mean, you don't care? Yeah, you get it online. I don't have enough money to do that, so. But this, I saw this happen up in Eureka, California. They moved up from San Diego and Berkeley and bought out all the competition. And now all we have is their, and they don't, I had to go 50 miles eventually to get my paper. You guys need to do something about this freedom of speech, because now, all of a sudden, the Minor, these clowns about this, have to be, whatever, I'm not going to call them rhinos or Democrats. You guys need to do something about free speech on this newspaper. I know it's a private business, but we don't need it here. Number 34, 35, 36, and 37, and 42 should have not been on the consent agenda. There should have been line item veto. They're asking for money again, and you guys have already told them, no, travel expenses and all that. Are these mandatory, or could they be done by Zoom? That's the question I'm asking. Apparently, some of this stuff, Alan's going to bring it up next two weeks from now. His are mandatory. He has to go. And that's okay, that we need to pay. And in fact, they're staying overnight, but whatever. There's, I did an open records request in Bullhead City, and I got a stack of papers this on travel, and I'm going to reveal it tomorrow night at the Bullhead City Council meeting. They're charging, they're charging the Bullhead City taxpayers like over $400 a night for motels, taking their buddies with them, and then they buy gas in Las Vegas at $7.25 a gallon. What the hell is wrong with that story? Why can't we buy it? We're paying $3.15 at the fast trips in Bullhead, and he's paying $7.25 a gallon.
Thank you. Barbara Carpenter?
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Barbara Carpenter, and I live in Kingman. I'm here today to make some corrections to the record from the November 6 meeting. Thank you Supervisor Angus for reading that into the record. The corrections are to comments made by Mary Lou Shaner and Patrick Shaner. Both are people I know and like, but possibly they have been misled, as I was. Also, by past Director Carrie Azel, who I also like but am disappointed in for his less-than-truthful statements regarding the Beckmans, and supervisor Gold's statement that my letter had incorrect information. Earlier this year, past District Director Two, District Two Director Carrie Azel told me Charles and Josen Beckman had sold their house and moved from Fort Mojave. At that time, I asked if Mr. Azel could get resignations from the Beckmans. He told me he'd try, not realizing this would become a future issue. I didn't make a formal note of it, didn't worry about it, and didn't follow up with Mr. Azel. On 7/27, the first election for a new District Two Director was held. At that time, Mr. Azel, no longer a PC via his filed resignation, came in and provided two proxies, one for each Beckman. I asked why he was bringing them in since they had moved. He now said they had only moved temporarily to help with child with health issues. Both proxies were notarized by a notary in San Diego County, California. I accepted both proxies, even though they were questionable, and Mr. Azel was also allowed to vote for himself and his proxies. Correction. Mr. and Mrs. Shaner have stated that the Beckmans moved to Scottsdale to help with child with health issues. The proxies received by Mr. Azel were notarized in California, not Arizona. Chairman Kinch was accused of using her assessor's position to look up information on the Beckman Southsdale. Correction. After 7/27, the meeting, I, of my own volition, did a public records search on the residence inhabited by the Beckmans and found that it had been sold. It appears that Mr. Azel's first notification of the Beckmans' move was correct. Chairman Kinch was accused of creating a new forum for resignations without a signature line in order to remove PCs she does not like. That is untrue. The new forum was created before 2023 to accommodate deceased and moved members. Supervisor Gold, who I also know, like, and respect, stated my letter was incorrect. I'm taking it for granted he was speaking of the board's overreach in GOP party business. I have seen the legal notification the board members received in regard to precinct committee men appointees pursuant to ARS 16821, the board, and ARS 16291, the board was legally notified that this is under the purview of their respective political parties. I expect this is when Attorney Esplem was asked for input. Considering the notifying law firm has experienced in these matters, I would request that the board provide statutes that declares, without ambiguity, that the board has the power to deny any notifications provided by the Mojave County Democrat Central Committee or the Mojave County Republican Central Committee. Respectfully, me.
Thank you. Chuck DeChazier?
Chuck DeChazier, 8778 Polaris Road, Topoc, Arizona. Here to speak today about transparency in government. For one thing, a couple meetings back, I asked for Sam to either turn in his letter of resignation or this board to fire him for not doing his job correctly. And now, what I see is you guys had a meeting, and item number 91 was pulled into executive session, and I guess you guys gave him another contract or something rather than fire him. I don't know if he has naked pictures of somebody or whatever to hold over the head, but, you know, he's not doing his job, because we're seeing abatements such as Armin mentioned before that take years and years. And suddenly, you know, I piss somebody off, and my property gets cleared off in a matter of what would seem like hours in the big scheme of things here. I'd also like to ask you to pull items 8, 9, 10, and 11 off from your consent agenda, because we've heard just recently there was an item that came before this board where the Development Services was asked to, well, they were never asked, they just came up with it on their own concerning the containers in Mojave County and where they could be placed and how many could be placed where. And during that comment session, it was stated that if you had three lots and two of them were vacant, and you had a house on one, well, you could put three containers on it. You didn't have to build two more houses on those vacant lots, which is what the Development Services was indicating with their proposal. Well, items 8, 9, 10, and 11 are all one site, but they've been separated out to the tune of $15,000 of billing for abatements. And we're looking at, we've gone from, in 2020, a total billing of less than $1,000 to 2021, $50-some thousand, to 2022, $125,000, all in abatements. This year, we're looking at a quarter million dollars. I spoke with the finance director and asked him, you know, where's this money coming from? He said there's a budget item. At what point do we give Development Services, like the $18 million that we're going to have as a shortfall next year as their budget for however many houses or things that they want to clean up in this county, they just magically come up with a number, not knowing what next year is going to bring? Thank you.
Tonya Dalson?
Good morning. Tonya Dalson, Mojave County taxpayer. I'm speaking in opposition to number 44 and number 46 on item number 21 of the consent agenda. These are home rehab projects where taxpayers can be on the hook for new roofing, new HVAC systems, new decks, windows, kitchens, bathrooms, et cetera. The first homeowner is having almost $40,000 worth of work done on her home. And I have a visual here. I don't know if it's going to be on the screen. And the second is having almost $30,000 worth of work done. In many cases, these are charity. Morally, this is not your money to be charitable with. The government doesn't have anything of its own to give anybody. In order for the government to give something to someone, it must first take something from someone else. Ultimately, the only way government can take something from someone is at the end of a gun. At first, the government doesn't threaten people. All they do is send a letter with a bill. Everyone knows what will happen if the bill is not paid. They will get more letters, and the bill will get bigger. If the bill is still not paid, the government may send agents who show up with guns. Almost everyone pays their taxes without protest, because they know that if they don't pay what the government thinks they owe, the government is prepared to use as much force as necessary to overpower them. Compulsory charity goes against the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution that says our life, liberty, and property can't be taken for public use without can't be taken for public use without due process or just compensation. Tax forms with places where people can voluntarily donate to programs like these is more in line with the American way than government using the threat of violence against peaceful people to take their stuff and give it to others who haven't earned it. Please use these opportunities, as Mike Smith likes to call them, to help people become aware of how their money is being spent, because many people who are paying these taxes can't afford to make these repairs on their own homes. And this isn't right. Thank you.
Order. Stephen Lee.
First, and this is the first time I've done this, many of you have noticed I purposely sat.
Excuse me. Can you please state your name for the record?
Stephen Lee, Bullhead City. Many of you have noticed for the first time, I actually decided to sit down during your pledge of allegiance because I brought this up at both the city council meetings and is finally on the agenda, I heard, for Bullhead City tonight and tomorrow. This military maritime corporate flag, which is the designated flag of the New World Order, the corporate government of the all caps United States of America. The American constitutional flag has no gold. There's been arguments made that it was adopted for military maritime use, but this is not the civilian flag. This is not the flag that represents our Constitution. A flag, I looked up the prices. I would be happy to donate one if with all the money you spend, you guys say you can't afford it. It costs less than $100 to replace that flag with a constitutional American flag that I'd be happy to pledge allegiance to. On another note, I ditto Scotty in what he said about our complete lack of free press. We are, we have no free press anymore. We have the, a lady, I just sent out an article who used to work for the CIA, and she's in charge of one of the Biden administration's communication and information things from Stanford. And they are using this both with private corporation and with government to absolutely control the narrative online. They were responsible for all the COVID messaging, and this is nationwide. This is what we're dealing with. I drive 50 miles round trip to bring back copies of the Patriot Free Press. It's a very small newspaper. If there's any way they can get any government funding, and I do believe in, or private from people that want to support a free press, we need to figure out how we can help this paper enlarge itself, get advertising. They cover our local issues for Kingman. They have for Bullhead. I've advertised in it. I strongly recommend that everyone try and support this. And I disagree and dislike people, some people, but I got from the gist of what I got, from what Hildy said about the carbon stuff, it sounds like, and I didn't get it clear, you might be on our side on that one. And that's an important one because we need to stop all this carbon stuff. Carbon is good. We are carbon. Carbon dioxide is good for creating oxygen and for trees living. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kenneth Barth. Kenneth Barth.
Good morning Supervisor Lingefelter and members of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. My name is Kenneth Barth. I'm a tenured resident of Mojave County. I reside in the middle of nowhere, south of Hackberry. But I wanted to speak and bring to the attention of the board, to assist the board in making its decisions today, two peripheral, two matters that are peripheral to an additional, to an agenda item that will be discussed later today and presumably voted on. I wanted to bring to the attention of the board so that there's clarity in reaching its decision that in discussing or debating or voting on matters dealing with voting in elections, that voting in elections by citizens of the United States is not a mere privilege, but is a constitutional right, as is made clear by the 15th, 19th, 24th, and 26th Amendments with the text of the amendments stating the right of citizens of the United States to vote. So it is not a mere privilege, and I would want you to approach the issue of voting as a constitutional right, not a mere privilege. Secondly, another issue that would probably come up today, and this is peripheral to that issue when it comes up, is that in the state of Arizona, as you probably are aware, but I want to make it extremely clear and confirm this, that attorneys that are licensed to practice law in the state of Arizona are bound by a code of conduct. And that code of conduct restricts them and prohibits them from engaging in the following manner. Arizona Rule Civil Procedure 11B provides it by signing a pleading motion or other document, and attorney certifies it to best the person's knowledge, information, and belief that the factual contentions have evidentiary support. A lawyer shall not knowingly make a false statement of fact or law to a tribunal or fail to correct a false statement of material fact or law previously made to the tribunal by the lawyer. Claims are sanctionable if they are brought without substantial justification. This will come up later when I would like to address the board regarding agenda item, I believe it's 52, since it's, that is likely to come up on that. So that's it for now.
Thank you. Becky Foster. Becky Foster. Is she coming in? Becky Foster. You want to speak, Becky Foster? She's coming down.
Good morning. Rebecca, I'm Becky Foster. I'm here to speak on several items. It's not item seven, 19, 28, 29, 31, and 39. Can I just make a blanket statement for all of them except for seven?
This is your three minutes to use as you choose to speak on any item that's on consent. So go ahead. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry.
This is your time to speak on any item on the consent that you choose. So.
Okay, would you indulge me a little bit with the time because I'm covering seven, several items?
And in fairness to everybody else, it's three minutes. So proceed.
Okay. Well, on item number seven, I don't know if the supervisors devised a form to be used for this. You talked about that in your last meeting. Is the form that was it submitted with these names, this revised form?
Can't comment.
Can't comment. Don't call the public.
Okay, well, I will just let you know that I don't have any objection to the names being presented, but I do have an objection to the emails and the personal information for contact being removed from the form. And I think that, speaking as a precinct committeman, I like to be able to know who my fellow precinct committemen are and to be able to communicate with them. And if I need to get a proxy from someone or give someone a proxy, I know who to contact. We are not given that information, and it's not even put on the board for public information. So I think that needs to be on there. Okay, on item number 19, you've been going over your budget, trying to make up the budget shortfall, the deficit with millions of dollars. I forget what number it is, but it's a large amount. And I think that the board should, if you're really serious about closing the deficit, making it smaller or maybe eliminating it, I don't think you're going to be able to eliminate it, is you need to get serious about it. Item number 19, you've got a $202,000 item. Item 28, you have $14,000 to augment, $50,000 in budgeted funds. The 29, item 29, you've got $7,132,000 and $32 to augment $25,000 in budgeted funds. Then 31, similar amount, $100,000 in savings from an approved budget item. I would think that any savings you would put toward closing the deficit. Item 39, the high ground person that I think you could properly utilize county staff and yourselves to do this, $10,000 a month will go quite a ways to close the budget deficit. You know, with my budget and most everybody in Mojave County's budget, the inflation has taken a toll on it, and even pennies matter. Now, you can say, well, this is just a couple thousand dollars. It's not going to do much toward it. But if you count every penny, maybe you'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Beaufort.
Good morning Supervisors. For the record, my name is Greg Beaufort, Mojave County Taxpayer. And for those of you that are new to the fact that we've been lied to about, just about everything in our lives, but particularly those that push the COVID lie and continue to push the COVID lie. I walked up here today and there's still practice social distancing stickers on the door here. That's a sigil. That's a symbol of the fraud that continues to be persisted here. And we have a supervisor here on the Board of Health, who chairs the Board of Health, who pushes a vaccine masquerading, bioweapon masquerading as a vaccine continually in this county. That happens. We're taking funds now to push what, there are state hearings now. We've had state hearings not, this isn't me talking. This fraud has unfolded. There are people that have testified in front of the state now about the dangers of this bioweapon, subject matter experts, people far more knowledgeable about this than me. As a former police officer, I can detect the lies and the deception that occurred in behavior. Everybody from the Fauci and the origins of this fraud. So what I'm here to do, and for the people that are new to this, if you want to catch up on the lies of Lake Havasu City and the things that they did, go to desert sage podcast.com. There you'll see a chronology dating back to September of 2020 of testimony that I and other Havasu Patriots gave about the violations of constitutional law, statutory law, but more importantly, moral law, God's law, divine law, you know, karmic law, call it what you want. You know, I should also note that, you know, I'm not political. I'm not registered to vote. I don't believe in a political solution to tyranny. I'm not religious. I'm spiritual. And I'm here to unmask those people that claim to be patriots, that claim to be Republicans, that claim to be conservatives, that are Christians in name only, because that's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm looking at. And you can see by the attendance of the people that are here, there's a great lack of trust and confidence in government that continues to exist. Their rights are being whittled away, our national sovereignty and our individual sovereignty as a result of the 2020 fraud, whether it's election fraud or whether it's the COVID fraud, that continue to persist. And I, again, I'm here to hold a high degree of accountability, particularly to the two law enforcement, former law enforcement professionals who violated their oaths, straight up violated those that they took several times. Once in the military, right Buster? You took it in the military. As a veteran, you took an oath. I'll be back. Thank you. Jennifer Esposito.
Order. Order, please. Jennifer Esposito.
Jennifer Esposito, candidate for District Four County Supervisor. Picking up where we left off at the last meeting, I had signed up two meetings in a row to speak on an agendized item open for public discussion, which was the renewal of the county manager's contract. Two meetings in a row, my name was not called. My husband's name was not called at the last meeting. And without any discussion, you renewed the county manager's contract. And what I wanted to show you was, and this is very interesting, when Cactus Utilities on behalf of Dwight Zem approached you about purchasing the Golden Valley Improvement District, as you can see in this document, the county manager's first thought was not to contact you Supervisor Johnson, or you Supervisor Gould, or you Supervisor Angus, not even you Chairman Lingefelter. His very first thought was to contact Travon Pennington of Angle Homes. Now, this was all the way back in June. Why do you think that was? See, I'm a very curious kind of person, having been an investigative reporter. So I filed a couple of public records requests. I'm now weeding through about 1,900 pages, plus or minus, related to the Golden Valley Improvement District, Cactus Utilities, the board, GVID. What's curious about the date on this is that Cactus contacted Mr. Elters on June 15, and Elters responded on June 22, saying that he had shared it with the board. But in truth, that was a lie. Actually, it was Chairman Lingefelter who had to tell Mr. Elters, please share this information with the rest of the board. Now, I think that the public has a right to know, since you've already renewed a contract for the county manager, that he's being paid $15,549.73 per month plus benefits. That works out to roughly $89.71 per hour. So when he stacks the agenda with 90 something items and forces you to sit here for six or seven hours, do the math, he's getting paid, oh, roughly $600 to sit in that seat. And I'm just not sure that we're getting our money's worth. Moreover, since you did not deny and acknowledge the emails which showed that Supervisor Bishop and Chairman Lingefelter were having secret meetings with Travon Pennington and Angle Homes, Cactus Utilities, and on behalf of GVID, I strongly suggest that in any future vote, that the two of you recuse yourselves unless and until you're willing to make the contents of those Zoom meetings public. And I strongly suggest that the other three of you abstain from voting on any item regarding Angle Homes or Cactus Utilities if they do not recuse themselves, because we, the people, do not know what's on the table here, and we do not have any evidence whether this deal benefits any member of this board or any member of county staff. But like I said, I'm weeding through an awful lot of emails, and I'm finding an awful lot of interesting stuff that I may have to prepare a full report on. Thank you very much. Thank you.
That was our last speaker. We do have one presentation this morning. Presentation of the 2023 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement, AEP Award by the National Procurement Institute to the Mojave County Board of Supervisors on behalf of the Mojave County Procurement Department. Director Acton.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. I will make this fairly quick, but not so quick because my team is trying to get here so that they can be here for a photo op. So it should be live on the screen. There we go. I don't know why it cut off the format, but that's okay. I'm just going to go through a few key things. So in September, I believe, we received notification that we got the AEP Award again for 2023. This is Mojave County's 18th award, our fifth consecutive. So a few things that might matter to this board. This award recognizes organizational excellence in public procurement. It's continually evolving criteria. I use it for benchmarking annually when I'm putting the application together. It has lots of performance measures and best practices, so it makes sure that we're staying on the cutting edge and that we continue to be a top procurement team. A couple of things to compare. A couple of things to compare how Mojave County stacks up against other agencies within Arizona and within the United States and Canada. So Arizona is one of 25 agencies that have received this award since inception. We are one of 12 agencies receiving it this year. It's our 18th award, as I've said, and our fifth consecutive. When you look broader at the U.S. and Canada, we're one of over 200 applicants, only 194 received the award this year. We're one of 566 total that have received it since inception, and of the 194 that received it, only 45 counties received it. There are eight agencies that are on their fifth consecutive award. Then a little bit of a deeper dive within Arizona. Arizona agencies that have received the award in 2023, it was six cities, three counties, two higher education institutions, and then a special district, the Central Arizona Project. Number of awards received by Arizona agencies, there are seven agencies that have 18 or more total awards, and there are five agencies that currently only have one award. Sierra Vista is a first time recipient this year. And then looking at consecutive awards, the city of Tucson, where I came back to the county from, is one of, I think, only six in the entire nation that have received this award 28 years since its inception. And then when you go down the list, Tempe, Chandler, Mesa, and Pima County have it for 19 consecutive years. If we hadn't missed it one time, five, five years ago, we would be with this group of people. Then the Central Arizona Project just received their 16th, Arizona State University their 15th, Pima Community College in Maricopa County now have two consecutive awards. Maricopa came back to the mix last year. Flagstaff just received its first consecutive award after taking a couple of years off, and Sierra Vista is a first time recipient. And then finally, a couple of things from the application this year. We got 20 more points than we had received in the prior application. Part of that had to do with some of the criteria, which I'm highlighting here. One had to do with an internal customer service survey and making sure that we're making improvements within how we operate with our internal customers. The other criteria nine, I talk about the use of requirements contracts for 30% of our spend. Mojave County's submittal is being used as a model submittal, so that other agencies that want to apply for this award can actually look at what we submitted and use it as example in the likelihood of them receiving the points for that item. And the evaluator comments on that was that it clearly demonstrated and easily, was easy to follow identifying the submittal, the submittal met criteria. This one is one of the most difficult ones for me to work on with our reporting capabilities right now, so I'm excited that maybe future years will be a little bit easier to put together. And then we did receive 10 points for certification of the chief procurement official, that's me. I received my NIGP CPP certification, which is one of the recognized certificates for a chief procurement official. And then we also received having 75% of our eligible professional staff obtaining a procurement certification. Part of that is attrition. You know, when you lose staff, you have less that are eligible, so we were technically 100% certified with eligible staff this year. So that is it for my presentation. I'd love if the Board has any comments or questions, and then I don't know if my team there in the back will come up for a photo op if you guys are open to that.
Thank you, Director Acton. Comments for Director Acton? Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. Well, congratulations and for that in-depth explanation. I just want to make people aware, in case you don't know, that it was, and this isn't taking away anything from you guys now, that, but it was our Chairman Travis Langenfelter many years ago who set us on this path of excellence. And so we're seeing some of the fruits of those efforts from years ago, so I wanted to mention that and thank him. He's probably embarrassed, but congratulations.
I appreciate that. I'm one of the fruits of that labor.
Other comments from the Board? Tara, I just want to say first and foremost, and to everybody that's watching, you know, you mentioned seven Arizona agencies have received the AP Award 18 or more times in total. And I think when you think of all of the different agencies out there, state agencies, counties, you know, down to the special districts, and for only seven, that's, that's pretty, pretty interesting and pretty great. And the only other thing I'd say is, kind of piggybacking off of Supervisor Angus's comments, I hired Tara many, many years ago with zero public procurement experience, and now she is a stronger director than I ever was. So she's, she's involved nationwide with NIGP, and she's doing great things, and she's got a good team. So thank you guys for everything that you do. I think it demonstrates a certain level of, of commitment to the citizens of Mojave County to maximize every dollar that's spent, so. Did you want a photo?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes.
That brings us to our consent agenda. I'm going to go and see which items are going to be pulled. Supervisor Bishop, would you like to remove any items from consent today?
Yes, I would. 37 and 30, or 37 and 45.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus?
42.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number eight, nine, 10, 11, 31, 35, 36, and that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items eight, nine, 10, 11, 31, 35, 36, 37, 42, and 45.
So moved.
Second.
For that motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a Chuck DeShazer, a constituent, wanted, requested that this be pulled off the agenda so he could speak to it.
There is a form here, Mr. DeShazer, you want to come up to the podium for three minutes? Thank you.
Would it be possible to have Tim Walsh explain eight, nine, 10, and 11?
We're going to go one item at a time, so we're on item number eight right now?
They're all the same site, but I was just wondering if he could explain why they have 18 inspections on one site?
If that's all, you have three minutes to comment, and after that, we can certainly bring staff up.
Okay. My name is Chuck DeShazer, 8778, Polaris Road, Topeka, Arizona. What I'm looking at is items eight, nine, 10, and 11 are all one site. I put my phone up there to show you an overview of that one abatement that they're doing as four separate ones, because they're on four separate pieces of property. We're also, when you look at the background information for these items, you will see that each of the four properties is charged $1.35 fee for administration. In my abatement, I got charged for one property 26 hours at $50 an hour. They're charging one hour at 35. They're also charging $295.75 per abatement on each lot, which equates to 18.22 inspections. How you get .22 of an inspection is beyond me, but they're also charging travel of $70 for each particular. And I don't know how many times they needed to travel or where this was ever approved. You guys still haven't straightened out the 2021-3 versus 2020-7 conflict in the law. And on top of that, the, all four of these properties are owned by the same people. They get four different title searches, and I've been told by your county attorney's office, Mr. William Davis, explained that, oh, it's not in the law to actually do a title search to see who owns rents leases, which wouldn't even show up in a title search. But you guys get to charge four times for four different pieces of property. But I got charged for two different title searches, and I know this one must have taken a lot longer than that. When we were discussing the container issue a couple months back, we were told that properties like this would be treated as one site plan, I guess, that they wouldn't be treated as separate properties so that you could put vacant properties having separate containers. And that eventually got pulled off the information that was presented by Development Services. Again, I'm saying that this whole thing is being run like some sort of joke, because we were supposed to be by December seeing something to resolve these issues of 2020-7 versus, and you're never going to be able to resolve it as long as that law is still in effect with what they have presented to the Building Code Advisory Board.
Thank you. That is the only individual we have signed up to speak on this item. I'd open it up to the Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Walsh, can you come up and explain the situation?
So these are four parcels owned by the same individuals?
Chairman Langenfelter, Supervisor Gould, that is correct.
So did they make four trips every time they had a reason to visit the site? Or did they make one trip and visit all four sites?
Chairman Langenfelter, Supervisor Gould, I believe on this property, on this abatement, we made multiple trips out there. There was many inspections, there was much on the abatement. There was a lot of work, both by staff as well as by the attorney's office and our contractors in order to clean this up. If I can, I've got a slideshow that I'd be happy to share with the Board to show the condition of the property. I believe Mr. DeShazer's overview there showed a brief view of what a mess this property was, but if I could get, let's see, the rose by, here we go. On the left, you'll see the befores, on the right, you'll see the afters. So this, this property was not just a few shipping containers on a property. This was a whole bunch of junk and debris that staff had to work through to clean up. So there were, there were multiple trips. So I think to address the .22 comment on inspections, that because there are four different properties, we can't lean them all as one, we have to lean each property individually. So those, those costs that were borne by staff and our contractors to clean this property up were split evenly across the four properties.
It seems like we should try to group our work together. So if we're going to, these are four contiguous properties?
That's correct.
It seems like we should go out and inspect all four of those in one trip would be my only issue.
Chairman Langenfelter, Supervisor Gould, I believe that is exactly what we did. I believe we've just been out there a number of times, so those total number of inspections were split evenly across the four properties.
Thank you, sir.
It's a pleasure of the Board.
Chairman Langenfelter.
Supervisor Bishop?
So as most of you know, I lived in chloride for 20 years. That property, all four properties have been, needed abatement for at least 20 years that I'm aware of, probably 25 years now. So I can tell you that the town celebrated when this abatement occurred, and they're very appreciative that Mojave County stepped up and helped with this situation. With that knowledge and information, I make a motion that we approve.
Thank you. You've heard that motion?
Second.
For that motion and second, it definitely did look like a heavy lift, so. Call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number nine, Supervisor Gould?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 10, Supervisor Gould?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 11, Supervisor Gould?
Motion to approve.
Second.
For that motion and second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. I've moved to item number 35, Supervisor Gould?
31, Mr. Chairman.
31.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Director Lutowski here today? He is. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Can you explain what we're doing here in item 31?
Yes, Chairman Langenfelter, members of the Board, Supervisor Gould, staff has identified a carpet condition at the Ag Extension Building, which the county owns, as consisting of numerous areas of distressed carpeting to the level of really being a tripping hazard for the occupants. And as a result, staff has identified that by comparing this project to an originally scheduled project in the FY '24 Approved Capital Improvement Program for Facilities, and that's the administration building, Phase Four flooring, that by setting aside those funds and not pursuing that $100,000 project, it does provide for a source of funds for this $45,000 project at Ag Extension, but because of the numerous tripping hazards, staff is, this is a significant priority that has come about of late.
Thank you, sir. So we are the landlord for the Department of Agriculture in that?
That's correct. Yes, that's our building.
No further questions.
Thank you. Additional discussion or comments from the Board? If not, I would open it up to the Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Move that item 31 be adopted.
Thank you. You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
For that motion and second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Now, item number 35, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if I could get Mrs. Durst to come up and explain what's going on in item 35?
Good morning. Item 35 is for signature verification. We have six full-time staff members, the chief deputy, the administrative assistant, three people in voter registration, and myself, that are all signature verified. Two of them have not been signature verified, so they need to attend. And the other four of us are technically renewals, but we don't signature verify at that mass volume during off-seasons as we do during elections, so I would like everyone to attend signature verification.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
So Recorder Durst, you have two employees that need to go and four employees that don't necessarily need to go?
Correct. Two new employees that haven't completed an election yet. One will be coming signature, I'm sorry, an election officer in December, and one just became an election officer. You have to attend that one time, and it's not technically a renewal, but I would like everyone to attend.
Is there any way that they can do this training online?
There is one virtual option, but none of them feel that they learn better, all of them, I'm sorry, feel that they learn better in person.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion from the Board members? If not, I would open it up to the Board.
Motion to approve.
For that motion? Do I have a second? All second for additional discussion. Recorder Durst, is this a, is this just a drive there, do the training and drive back type of a thing, or is there like hotel and room and board and all that stuff involved?
It's to drive there and drive back in one day.
In one day?
To the Phoenix area.
And they're going to be using a fleet vehicle?
Correct.
Okay. So no, no hotel rooms? None of that?
No.
Okay. So what's, what's the cost differential between the online version that you mentioned and the in-person version that you mentioned?
Online. Online.
Registration fee?
There's no registration fee.
So it's free registration, no matter if you do it online or if you do it in person?
Correct.
And the only expense is really?
To drive one county.
To drive? Are they going to, are they going to feed your folks when they're down there, a lunch or something?
They typically do not.
Okay.
So it could be one meal with $5.
And then this is mandated training? The item says that this is mandated?
So by state statute 16550, it is mandatory that we signature verify all early ballots.
And what do they learn in this program?
They are taught by a forensic analysis handwriting person how to signature verify handwriting.
And that prevents, in theory, from happening?
Correct. Yes, so if we cannot signature verify a ballot, the voter is contacted numerous ways, numerous times to cure that ballot. During different elections, they have a curing period. If it cannot be cured by election day, for presidential preference, they'll have five days.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Recorder Durst, you said that verifying the ballots is mandated, but is the training mandated also?
The first time training is mandated, but after that, there's not a renewal mandate.
So the other four people are, don't necessarily need to go? Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I would make a motion.
I think there's already a motion in second on the floor.
That's right.
I'd like to say something?
Supervisor Angus? Yes.
So let me get this straight. So you're going to take one car, everyone's going to go in it, regardless of the two people who have to go or four people. Maybe there's lunch, maybe there's not. And most of you are in this room today about election stuff. This is about signature verification. Don't you want your people to be well-trained? I don't get this. I don't know why we're wringing our hands over this. Out of everything we do, out of all the travel we do, I think this is pretty important. Thank you.
I would say, the reason I asked my questions was, I don't want to give anybody anything to hold over your head. So I seconded this, I'm going to vote in favor of it. And if you just want to tell me what the cost of a lunch is, like, I'll pay for it out of my own pocket. You guys sit there. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you announce it.
In a vote.
Vote's already been done. But if you have a question, I'm sure you can.
Yeah, I mean, I'll entertain the question after the vote.
I haven't voted yet. I'd like to ask a question before I make my decision.
The vote's been made.
Okay, then I just won't vote.
Okay. Sorry, if everybody would, if I try to watch both sides, if everybody would just announce themselves that they want to say something so I don't miss you, I don't want to miss anybody. But it's difficult for me sometimes in my peripheral vision to see if you're doing this or something. So I believe the eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 36, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recorder Durst, if you want to explain this one? Request also, please.
So with, accepting employment with Mojave County voter registration, as a voter registration specialist, you have two years to become certified as an election officer in our job description. I have one new staff member that just started in October. She needs to be signi, or I'm sorry, certified as an election officer to participate in majority of our rules for all the upcoming 2024 elections. I've asked for two people here, as I have a job posting, I haven't been able to fill that to date, so it would most likely be one full-time staff member attending this. When I attended in 2019, it was one week in Phoenix, Monday through Friday, eight to five. Now, some of it is virtual, and then you have three days to attend in Phoenix. And then at the end of those three days, you take a test, you have to pass that at 80%, and then you have to go to a recert. Once you attend recert, you become certified. So this is for one whole week because it's Monday through Wednesday for class, and then Friday is the recert class.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 36 be adopted.
Second.
Heard that motion? In second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 37, Supervisor Bishop.
This is to approve non-mandatory out-of-county travel for the county recorder, so I wanted to hear why this was necessary to attend if it's not mandatory.
Sure. I believe everyone on the board and many people, many directors in the county have been invited to this Secretary of State Election Security, TTX. I've attended one in the past. It's a tabletop exercise that's taught by security personnel and people from the Secretary of State. I myself, I'm over early voting. I do not do election day voting, but this can assist in any catastrophes that can happen at an early voting site, polling location. It just makes you aware, you have to act on your feet. You're assigned a different role than the role that you play in your county, so I would not be assigned as the county recorder. In the past, I was assigned as the IT director. So it just makes you think outside of the box, what you're going to tell press at the time, how you're going to get the word out of a polling location closing or any catastrophe.
Supervisor Angus.
So we heard from the Secretary of State at the CSA summit, and I believe he said that this is all free, like, they were going to cover the costs of the hotels?
Correct.
Mostly free. So is that true?
The only thing that I would, Mojave County would be paying for would be a travel for myself with a fleet vehicle. They're paying for hotel for anyone outside of Maricopa County, and they will feed all of us while we're there.
It's a fleet vehicle?
Yes.
Additional discussion? If none, I would open it up to the board.
Chairman Linganfelter.
Supervisor Bishop.
Because this is not mandatory training, and if you've already attended this in the past, I'll make a motion to deny.
You've heard that motion? Heard that motion in second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Not sure. Can you read back the vote, please?
The motion carries three to two with Supervisor Johnson, Gould, and Bishop voting yes.
Thank you. Moving on. Item number 42, Supervisor Angus.
I ask this to be taken out for no action. I think it's a little premature for myself because we will be electing a new person, appointing a new person for the legislative liaison for CSA, and frankly, I'm not even sure I want to do it anymore. So I ask for no action.
No action on item number 42. Thank you. Item number 45, Supervisor Bishop.
Yes, I pull this just for an opportunity for Director Smith to explain a little bit about what's going on with this agenda item, if he's in the audience.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, Director Smith is out today, but Christopher, the deputy director is here.
Very good, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to have our workforce development manager, Sarah Langaro, speak on this, as she will be attending.
Thank you. So this specifically will be in Flagstaff. We have a every-four-year renewal of our state plan. Specifically, what that looks like is direction from the Workforce Arizona Council. What we're asking for is to be able to travel to Flagstaff, which is the closest location for us to discuss specifically, not only what it looks like for workforce in the entire state, but specifically for Mojave and La Paz County, which we cover. So they're aware of what our initiatives are and what we need to provide right here locally.
Okay, and this is optional training? It's not mandatory, right?
Supervisor Bishop, that is correct.
Okay, and you're aware that we're trying to cut down on our traveling expenses, trying to cut back as much as we can before we face this deficit next year?
We're absolutely.
So with that, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Supervisor Bishop, if I may, this is totally grant-funded, and it's important for us to be able to go to this type of session so that we can have a voice at the table for our rural area. We are smaller than other areas, and in order to make an impact on the plan, it would be important for us to be there. Just wanted to make that comment.
That's helpful. So there's no money coming out of the general fund? This is all grant-funded?
This is all grant-funded, and they're going to do a turnaround trip. They're going to go in the morning, and they're going to come back in the evening. I'm not sure if meals are provided or not, but it is totally grant-funded.
Okay, so that's the kind of information that this board needs. And with that, I'll amend my motion and make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second. Heard that motion in second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 47 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item number 47. We don't have anyone signed up to speak on item number 47. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number 47? If you could state your name for the record, please?
Michelle Cuccinata. My mom, Frankie Cuccinata.
Go ahead and proceed.
You proceed. You proceed. You start.
Okay, we're doing a road, our road on Arvada in Scenic, Arizona, which is four hours from here, which we drove. It is not a road anymore, it's a river gully that we have to drive through every day to get to our homes, and I'll let my mom take over there.
My name is Frankie Cuccinata, and after reading the engineer's report, we filed petition. I do believe that I filed the wrong type of petition. Your estimate is for an 84-foot wide highway, an estimated cost of $375,000. The two highways currently in Scenic, Arizona, east to west is Elbow Canyon, north to south is Scenic Boulevard, with a bridge, which we had a special assessment for that, and those are both only 24 feet wide, so we only need 24-foot wide for our neighborhood road. The report said property would have to be purchased and fences moved, there are no block walls, but a 25-foot road, or 24 feet, would only need, there would be no fences moved, no purchased property. One covert pipe is needed at the intersection of Rainbow and Arvada. The current asphalt entrance off of Elbow Canyon also needs to be addressed. It has, it's like a diving board because it comes straight out, but our road goes down, and we are constantly having to repair that. There's a, there is a sinkhole to the west side of the entrance diving board. I've called and reported this many times, and once, to my knowledge, they have come out and filled in the trenches and the sinkhole, but they did not fix the diving board problem, so it still goes straight out and the road goes down. And a few days after they fix it, because it is a diving board, that trench is constantly there. We have several people that used to repair that road, and two of them are no longer available, and one is currently being treated for cancer, so they're no longer able to help us with this problem. Arvada Road is the access for Eldorado Road, Rainbow, and Vermilion residential neighborhoods. I have talked to nurses, healthcare providers, housekeepers, UPS, FedEx drivers, they all agree that Arvada Road is the worst road in Scenic. The last car I owned, I had for 21 years. Since living on Arvada Road for 23 years, I've purchased nine cars. The road wreaks havoc on automobiles, including the tires, front end alignments, shocks, motor mounts, and even windshields with a little ding. The vibration of the road takes out the entire windshield. There are many rocks and boulders that protrude two inches above the ground throughout the entire length of the road. I do have a bid to submit from a licensed Arizona contractor for $176,700, with two, not one layer, of the chip seal, which would make the road much stronger. Arizona recording fees, filing fees, applications, and those types of charges are not included in this bid, but you all know what those would be, so just add that to the 176. I understand that Arizona did, can we get more time since there?
How much more time do you think you need?
Less than a minute.
I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Okay. The, oh, that you received $2 billion from the government, and then recently you have received some funds for rural areas for improvements of broadband and infrastructure. We're hoping that you can direct some of those funds to this area where we have retirees and senior residents, so that we may have a drivable road, not a riverbed. At least, maybe supply some dirt to cover up those boulders and rocks. So we're just looking for assistance. We need your help. We feel like the orphan stepchildren of Arizona.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on item number 30, or excuse me, item number 47?
Do you have any questions?
This is a public hearing, we can't go back and forth. When I close the public hearing, if we have to call you back, we certainly will do so. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item number 47? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 47. Director Lutowski, do you want to come up and speak on this issue, please?
Yes, Chairman Linganfelter, members of the board. This concerns the consideration of establishing a .37-mile section of Arvada Road where it ties in to Scenic Boulevard as a county highway, I mean, Elbow Canyon Road. I was personally at this site. This is a residential roadway. The only nuance is it just happens to be a section line, but Mojave County does not currently maintain the road, so we are precluded by state statute from putting any resources, equipment, material on this roadway. We did discover in the course of preparing the engineer's report that there is a sizable amount of traffic. There's about 120 vehicles per day that uses this road, primarily because there is a lot of fronting properties, as well as that short section of Eldorado actually has kind of an enclave of additional residences that come off of Eldorado and take Arvada. There is actually a small business, like a dairy-type small business, that is on Eldorado as well, but by and large, the county highway process is really reserved for establishing roadways as county highways that serve a thorough, fair purpose, that serve regional traffic purposes. Arvada Road would not serve in any capacity regional traffic flow through the area from Elbow Canyon Road onto other places. It would purely serve as a point of ingress and egress to the abutting properties. A couple of points of clarification. Because it is a section line road, staff would look toward the standard detail, the county standard detail for road sections for section line roads, and that's for the 84-foot of right-of-way. However, we did provide in the backup an estimate, premise solely on developing a 24-foot road under the soil stabilization hard surfacing process. We estimated for that section would be about $375,000. And there is additional right-of-way that would be necessary. There is only 30 feet of right-of-way in that corridor right now, and that's completely insufficient. If the county were to undertake a project and bring it to a county standard, so I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you.
Chairman Linganfelter.
Supervisor Bishop.
Mr. Lutowski, I have a question. The speaker stated that we have repaired this road in the past. If this is, this is clearly a road that doesn't meet our standards for a county highway, but I'm wondering, are we repairing a road that is not in our maintenance system?
Chairman Linganfelter, Supervisor Bishop, no, our crews would not enter Arvada Road to repair it. It's not in our maintenance system. There's a potential, and I can only hypothesize that maybe the Elbow Canyon Road corridor needed to be repaired in that vicinity. And that's certainly something we can do, repairing, grading shoulders, et cetera.
Would this road possibly be a good example for a road improvement district, perhaps?
Absolutely. Chairman Linganfelter, Supervisor Bishop, there's a few approaches. The residents can actually petition to develop the roadway on their own, at their own expense to a county standard to accept. The improvement district route would probably be another great example where the abutting property owners from the improvement district can share the cost to develop a road to a county standard, for instance.
Other discussion? Are there any transportation-related grants that the residents could work with the county to try to secure? Director Lutowski?
Chairman Linganfelter, that's a great question. Actually, in the course of the last few years and monitoring this, and of course, pursuing grants for the good of the county, I have not really seen anything that exists, you know, from a federal or state funding perspective that lends towards improving roadways that are not currently maintained by the county.
Got it. Regarding some sort of an improvement district scenario? Regarding some sort of an improvement district scenario, how many years can the residents stretch out payments?
Chairman Linkenfelter, it's typically 10 years.
So 10 years.
Correct, to provide for the design and construction repayment.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'd open it up to the board.
Chairman Linkenfelter?
Supervisor Bishop?
I make a motion for denial of the petition.
Second. You've heard that motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Aye. Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 48 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item number 48. Is there, we have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number 48? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 48. What's the pleasure of the board? Actually, before we do that, Director Lutowski, do you want to come up and just briefly describe this item?
Yes, Chairman Linkenfelter, members of the board. This concerns a petition that was remitted through Mr. John Rossing. He sits on the Board of the Property Owners Association for Valley Vista. On October 16th, it was the preference for Mr. Rossing and the board to pursue establishing a county highway for purposes of a second access to Concho Drive to Valley Vista. That would consist of Borough Drive to Buckboard Drive. Since then, on October 20th, Mr. Rossing has emailed, and this is in your backup. Mr. Rossing, presumably acting on behalf of the Property Association, does not wish to pursue this petition. In fact, the Properties Association wishes to pursue a corridor via Superstition Drive that actually provides for a direct access to the northern third of Valley Vista. And we have, in recent days, confirmed that Superstition Drive itself is established as a county highway. That was back in 1998 under Resolution 98-89. So I'm here stating on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Rossing, that they do not wish to move ahead with this county highway establishment.
Thank you, Director Lutowski. That was my understanding in meeting with them as well. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to deny... For that motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 49 is a public hearing. We have several people that have signed up to speak on item number 49. The first of which is Danielle Oliek.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I'm Danielle Oliek from Golden Valley, and I'm a metered customer and property owner within GVID's boundary lines. Today, I'd like to express my concern over the proposed petition from two development companies to change the boundary lines to remove approximately 1,440 acres out of our improvement district with the intent to build affordable housing to be serviced by a private utility entity. As you know, the operations and maintenance, if I could get this up on the screen, too, as you know, the operations, maintenance, and development of the GVID water system is the financial responsibility of the property owners located inside of the boundary lines. It is clearly stated in Section 2.3 of GVID's Policies and Procedures, the district will look to the developer to pay the cost of increasing the capacity of the system to serve the proposed development. Depending on the size of those developments, the cost may be that of drilling a new well or constructing a new storage tank or laying new water lines or all of the above. Section 1.3 states, "The board further recognizes the value of the aquifer and will take every step possible to oppose attempts to obtain, sell, or transfer water from the district or the valley." By allowing developers to remove themselves from the boundary line to possibly escape financial responsibility that comes with developing inside of our water system is not only unfair to the rest of the property owners, but it also opens up the doors for other developers to do the same. By removing these parcels, the district will be losing out on millions of dollars in fees and future monthly revenues, which the success of the district is dependent on. To simply state that GVID could continue their operations as normal is not truly weighing the losses that would be incurred long-term and the unfair burden that would be distributed amongst the rest of the district property owners. The developers claim that the public sentiment from GVID is that we do not support their development. We do support responsible and fair development, but we do not support high-density or low-income housing in a primarily rural agricultural area that does not have the infrastructure to support individuals who would need services provided by the city. By bringing in thousands of new residents into a community without local law enforcement, grocery stores, public transportation, schools, and unmaintained roads, the developers will be putting the current residents and public at risk for increased crime and danger. Some of the questions that need to be answered, so we can all have a better understanding of the impact that this decision carries, is what type of affordable housing are these developers planning on building, and will they be receiving federal grant funding? How many units are planned, and how many service connection fees would be required? How much money would GVID lose in development fees and future revenue? And how would this move benefit the current residents and the public that live here now? Thank you.
Order.
First of all, make sure this doesn't provide feedback. Last we could did, our last time we did. Okay, this is hers, and this is mine. Good morning, I'm Butch Meriwether. I live in Golden Valley, and I'm a property owner within GVID. Good morning, Chairman Linkenfelter, and the others who are sitting in front of me today. I'm opposed to allowing desert, high-desert holdings and resurrected property from being allowed to pull out GVID. The petition they submitted to Mojave County is full of smoke and mirrors and full of half-truth. They say that by allowing them to pull out, the remaining property owners of GVID would better be served. That can be no further from the truth. If there's a catastrophic failure of one or more of the GVID wells, and there's not adequate amount of funds to complete the repairs, the Board of Supervisors would have to put a levy on all the remaining property owners. And of course, the two who want to abandon GVID would be thumbing their noses at us and saying, "Sorry, we don't have to help pay for those repairs." We all know that Cactus contacted the county about the possibility of purchasing GVID. The county manager then contacted Engel Homes, Chairman Linkenfelter, and Supervisor Bishop, and they ultimately conducted a Zoom meeting. Of course, we don't know what was discussed at that meeting, but it is interesting, the petition submitted to the county says their properties would be best served by a water company that could serve them and also provide wastewater sewer servers. Another word, Cactus. It seems that they have already made a tentative agreement with Cactus, and that's the sample. Putting the cart before the horse is the same as a solar company that wanted to come in Golden Valley. Supervisor Johnson opposed that, and ultimately, they were turned down. This is the same thing. They acquired the land before finding out they would have to do what they would have to do to get approval, and the cost of building 7,000 homes. We know GVID engineer Mike Garman provided the petitioner's information, but we don't know what he received, or what they received to provide them the favorable information, or what enriched him to abandon the GVI ship and go to Kingman. Did, excuse me, did Engel Homes grease this kid for him to get a new job? Please vote your heart and your mind, and not let GVID miss out on the possibility of having $36 million in their OEM phone. Vote no on Agenda 49. Thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board. Logan Marsh, Golden Valley. I'm also a ratepayer with GVID, as well as probably one of the largest ones other than the water haulers. I would like to really point out how much this would affect the district, removing this land from the district of potential improvements. I'm not going to say I'm for or against it, but, you know, and I'm not going to repeat a bunch of the items the previous people who had spoke on this are, because there's a lot of concerns from a lot of us, ratepayers for GVID. But the biggest one, if you do consider approving it, I am going to demand my well rights back. So that's, and I'm here speaking on my own behalf, I am a candidate for District 4, but if you do approve it, it would ultimately doom GVID and its future growth. It's a huge amount of land removal, so I'm going to want my well rights back. Thank you.
Becky Foster?
Got back just in time. I would like to say I'm Becky Foster. I live in Kingman in District 1. I'm opposed to the removing any of the properties out of the Golden Valley Improvement District. I don't live in Golden Valley. I used to represent Golden Valley, and I, as a Board of Supervisor, I also sat as a Golden Valley Board of, Golden Valley Improvement District Board of Directors. And their first well was given to the district by a developer who developed Crystal Springs. So I think it would be detrimental to the district itself to take any of the properties out of the district, and I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. At the last time when this came up, when the petition was filed, I did not have the information that I have now. And at that time, I said, "Hey, I don't see why I'd have a problem with that." Having done a lot of research with about 1,200 pages more to read through, I've already identified several problems. First of all, I was surprised to see this item on the agenda, because it says under the statute quoted for the petition that the property owners have to sign. Well, having gone to the Corporation Commission for High Desert Land Holdings, it seems that the statutory agent for that company is not the person who signed for those properties. It's a man named John D. Curtis. As a matter of fact, I took the liberty of printing off every document for High Desert Land Holdings, and Mr. Engel's name is not on any of them. So on that issue alone, the petition is defective, and should you move forward with this today without verifying the ownership of the property and the right of Mr. Engel to sign on behalf of those properties, I would be happy to turn this matter over to investigation, to the Attorney General's office. Moreover, I found it very interesting that the properties are listed as an assessed value of just shy of $1 million. And I noticed that these properties, when all of this negotiation and discussion, all the way back to Mr. Garman, back in at least May that I so far identified in my public records request, when all of this stuff started, these properties were all owned by resurrection properties. And the title was not transferred until after Mr. Elders contacted them. So that's why I was surprised that he was contacting them, since they didn't actually own the property at that time. The warranty deed was filed, and it shows the purchase price at $10. Now, I'm not an accountant, but that looks a little bit like, I don't know, tax evasion or something. However, the most important thing that we also need to consider is that the statute states very clearly, it has to be in the interest of the other people and the district. And so, as you can see, the properties, this is High Desert Land Holdings. These two here are resurrection. And up here is our standpipe, our booster pump, and our storage tank. No one would think that taking this section, and although it's legal to make it non-contiguous, to take that section and create an island that cuts it off with our infrastructure on it from the rest of the district. Moreover, this sets a terrible precedent that's never been done before. So since I'm not hooked up to meter, and a lot of us aren't, most of us are hauling water to our properties that we own in Golden Valley, if you let them out, we could all just file a petition, be the only one to sign it, be the only one that the county water department actually notifies, because that's what the statute says, and we can all leave the district, so that we will never, ever in the future, have to pay a penny of property taxes again. You know, you're talking about $36.5 million worth of fees that GVID would lose out on if this development goes through to the extent that they're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item number 49? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 49. I'd open it up to the board.
Chairman Linkenfelter? I see in the audience representatives from Engel Homes. I would like to hear from them. I'd like to hear about our secret meetings as well.
Board of Supervisors? Thank you. My name is Travon. I'm an employee at Engel Homes.
Could you just give it to the mic?
And a member of High Desert.
Can you please state your full name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Travon Pennington. I'd be happy to answer questions. To your meeting, I mean, how I remember this coming about is entirely different than what we've talked about today. So we've built 145 houses out of a location called Ship Estates. Ship Estates is the only sewer company that's in operation in Golden Valley. The owner of that sewer company is a guy named Dwight Zimp. I believe his name was mentioned earlier and referred to on an email. Dwight Zimp is in negotiations to have his company purchased by Cactus Utilities. So I think proper context is important here, right? So this utility company that we've been talking about, because they're the only sewer utility company in the valley, is in the process of being purchased. They also, Cactus Utilities owns water companies, sewer companies all over the state of Arizona. They also asked us about the likelihood of being able to purchase GVID, and I think in that same email, it was also a letter that was sent to Pioneer, right? They had an interest in buying water utilities in Golden Valley to go along with their sewer utilities. We, I think I forwarded an email with those two letters to Sam Elders, and I think that's what started this conspiracy theory. But that's how that started, right? And I believe that was, those emails and those letters of intent were forwarded to the Board of Supervisors, and here we are. I would also like, while I'm here, this is a map. The blue is property that we owned at the time that we made this petition. We did not own this parcel, but I just want to correct the 21-page staff report that was included, and I looked at this morning online, just had some misinformation. It stated that we own this parcel. We don't own that parcel. But in the meantime, since the months since we submitted that purchase, we had options on this area in the red. We've purchased these four parcels, right? So I'd just like to correct that. So we're sitting here talking about land that we properly own. So this petition is either land that we own, High Desert Land Holdings, and yes, Tyler Engel is here, and he is the signature. So I don't know what they're talking about, the signers. The signers for that company are the signers that signed that petition. And then this is option property that we intend to, it could be as many as 3,000 homes, and that's what the general plan is already approved for in this location. So I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Mr. Pennington, is it unusual for a development company such as Engel Homes to develop their own water supply company? Is this unique in any way?
I mean, it's unique to us. I mean, I think that's...
Is it unique to the state of Arizona or to Mojave County?
No, no, I mean, this is a task that lots of developers get thrown... We wish it wasn't, right? The reality is, we wish we could come sit down with GVID, sit down with a sewer company. To be quite honest, right, we're here, we got very nervous when the residents started petitioning the Board of Supervisors to turn this over to the residents, right? Right now, we have a really good working relationship with county staff. We can sit down, we can articulate and have conversations about what this might look like. But if you extract that mechanism out of this, we have no interest in sitting down with the homeowners of Golden Valley and talking about how we should spend millions of dollars in infrastructure money and where to put it and where to put those wells. So to be quite honest, right, that's why we're making this petition.
So you're making this petition because Engel Homes will have a substantial investment, which could go belly up if the water district is not successful?
Absolutely.
Whether it's run by the county or by... Whether it's run by the county or by, by a private Board of Directors elected by the GVID residents?
Yes.
Am I understanding that your, your request?
Yes.
Okay. And did we have any secret meetings or any?
There was, I believe there was two Zoom, Zoom calls, one with yourself and one with Travis Lincolnfelter, and that was the.
But the Zoom meetings did not contain?
It was.
Secret information?
It was Cactus making a proposal of the services they thought they could offer. And it may, it became, the reason why we're not here talking to Cactus is because it came very clear to us is that the Board of Supervisors had no interest in selling this utility to a private company. So we exit out the back door. Plan B is, no, we have no interest with negotiating or trying to figure out how to develop a water company or sit down with the homeowners of Golden Valley and pick site locations for wells and how to spend millions of dollars of infrastructure money. We feel like it would be in our best interest to go find both consultants, hydrologists, and companies that that's what they do and hold our hands and walk us through that process.
And these.
Uncharted territory for us.
These conversations did not include Supervisor Lincolnfelter and myself. They were individually.
Separate meetings, yeah. So most of the information that was talked about today was misinformation, not accurate. And if any, I mean, my phone number's fairly easy to get. If anybody in the public has, wants to find out what we're doing, I'd be happy to share that, right, rather than keep anybody guessing.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Other comments from the board?
Chairman Lincolnfelter?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions, if I may, if that's okay first, and.
Yes, and then I'd like to hear from our Deputy County Attorney.
Oh, actually, let's do that first.
So Mr. Espen, can you give us some information legally, how we stand in this, this proposal and our actions if we decide to approve?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, members of the board, Supervisor Bishop, a petition has been filed. A petition is to alter the boundaries of the district. Personally, I've never seen one of these before. We've always seen petitions to add to a district. I've never seen a situation where someone has filed a petition to alter. So this is new to me. I've tried to look at the different, you know, statutes and case law to see if there's any precedent for this. I couldn't find any. That's not to say that it hasn't happened. I just, there's no reported cases that, that address it. And so I'm just trying to follow through the, the terms of the statute. The fact that a statutory agent has not signed it doesn't concern me. Statutory agent and an owner oftentimes are two different things. Many times, a statutory agent is the person that's going to receive service or process for somebody's, if a corporation or business is being sued. And many times, I don't think the statutory agent is the owner. It depends on the business, depends on the type of business. But really, if it's an owner that, that files a petition asking to alter, now it's in front of the board. We've provided notice to the, to the community as required by statute. There's one question about whether notice needed to be submitted to the Corporation Commission. In this case, it does not, because if you look at Section 7 of the statute, you only have to provide notice to the Corporation Commission if it's within the boundaries of a, of a currently existing utility or one that is applying to be a utility that doesn't apply here. So you don't have to give notice to the Corporation Commission. So now it comes down to the question of whether the board can do this. Yes, the board can approve a petition or the board can deny it. This is the function of the board. The board has to determine, and, and this is the criteria, the board has to determine whether the public convenience, necessity, or welfare will be permit, will be promoted by the alteration of the district boundaries. So that's the criteria. The criteria is will the public convenience, necessity, or welfare be promoted by the alteration of the district boundaries? There is nothing in the statutes that say about how to withdraw from a district, how to do that. There's nothing. I mean, and, but, but there is language in, in there that says alteration of boundaries. I, I can't think of a scenario where if you don't alter it, it won't withdraw from the district. I mean, by virtue of altering the boundaries, something will be taken out. So it's really up to the board here. The, the board has the discretion to approve it, and the board has the discretion to deny it, and the basis being you're looking at the public convenience, necessity, or welfare. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Supervisor Bishop, did you have any other questions?
The only other question I have is, we heard from the one constituent, Mr. Marsh, saying that if this is approved, that he wants his well rights returned to him. I didn't understand that, and I don't know if you do, but can you petition to have your well rights reestablished when it's in the bylaws that you can't have a private well within the boundaries of the GVID?
I don't. I don't understand the legal argument for that. I don't, so I don't have any answers to that.
Order, sir. Order.
Do you think Mr. Lekowski might be able to answer that question? I think it's, it's a legitimate concern.
Thank you, Director Lekowski.
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Bishop, I heard the statement as well and don't really have any specific interpretation as to what that would mean. But the district, when it was established, established water allocations, and there's approximately 6,200 pre-existing water allocations for the 1,400 acre feet per year that the district receives as its assured water supply designation from ADWR. So the open question would be whether any of these properties that are being contemplated as existing water allocations that were assigned to them back in the early 90s when the master assessments went out on the base infrastructure, I'm speaking of the, the wells as well as the storage tanks and, and the, and the base water lines were, were constructed. So that would be the only thing that I can think of in terms of, but of course, if these properties were out of the district, then they would just, I would hypothesize that they would relinquish their, their water allocations, any water rights that those properties would have been previously assigned to, because those properties at one time were assessed in the early 90s for the base infrastructure costs. So that's the only thing I can hypothesize, that that was the intention there.
So Mr. Marsh has his own private well, and he is within the district. Can he operate that private well?
The Board of Supervisors has adopted since the early 90s a policy and procedure memorandum. It's been updated many times. I believe the policy and procedure memorandum, you know, does contain a statement opposing the development of wells, private wells in the district. We have not, we have not enforced that per se, though.
Okay, so you can't answer the, the question. If he starts using his well, is he going to be in hot water with the Board of Directors?
Again, it comes down to, you know, being able to really enforce, you know, what was stated in policy and that the district, through that policy and procedure memorandum, you know, opposes, if you will, the, the construction of private wells in the district. So I, I don't see an enforcement arm here.
Guess we deal with it if it happens, if it becomes a problem.
Or if there's, especially if there's damage to the district, which likely would not be the case.
Okay. Thank you. And just for the audience, we all have access to the bylaws and the, the information on GVID as members of the Board of Directors. Just wanted to throw that out there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Attorney Espen, I do have a question for you regarding what's contained in the law. You said that this is permitted if it is determined to be a benefit to the district. Is there a legal definition or professional staff opinion about what qualifies there?
That's a good question. I have not seen any definition in the statute itself, what qualifies as public convenience, necessity, or welfare. And so I think it largely led, it leads it to the board to decide that. The board has the discretion. It's a, I mean, you're a legislative body, so to speak, here, trying to decide this decision. So I don't see anything in the statute that defines public convenience, necessity, or welfare. I think it's largely up to the board's discretion.
Does staff have an opinion about if this is a benefit to the district or not? Or would you like to remain silent on that?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, I don't have a specific opinion on this. I think you just look at it in the reverse, and that if the parcels were to be removed, does that create an undue burden on the district? I think that would just be the open question.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I'm not done yet. I'll call on you in a second. The meeting that I had was a Zoom meeting, and it was really just to listen to, to what was being said. I take my, even though I don't represent Golden Valley, I take my, my role as a director of the GVID very seriously. And many of you that have spoken today are running, they're your active candidates for a Board of Supervisor seat. I would hope that all of you would, would understand and be open to listening to all sides of an issue in order to have the most information that you can so that you can make the most informed decision. Because there's a lot of people's livelihoods at stake. I mean, most people, they just turn the water on, but guess what? The board has to make sure they can continue to turn the water on. There's a lot of moving parts. And so I, I approach that in wanting to listen to everybody. I think that this whole scenario is, is a good lesson in the importance of doing your due diligence before you buy property in this area, because those of you that may have reviewed the finances of this district, I have, and I can tell you that right now, that this water district is only taking in enough revenues to perpetuate operations. And it's not taking in sufficient revenues to do significant asset replacements in the future. So it doesn't matter who runs this district long-term. It doesn't matter if it's the county that remains running it, or if it's the citizens that remain running it, or if it's a private water company that remain running it. Assets have, I mean, they deteriorate over time. Water lines deteriorate over time. Wells deteriorate over time. The whole system deteriorates over time. You have to have a system or a model that takes insufficient revenues in order to cover not only your daily operational costs in, in, you know, perpetuity or, excuse me, over the long term, but you have to have enough that you can make those system improvements. Otherwise, you're going to hit a point where the system is going to start really failing big time, and you're going to have a public health crisis related to water on your hands. I think the reason that the county went out with that, that surcharge is, is to try to, to combat that, because I believe the way that the district rules are right now, in order to incur debt in the district, you have to get, you have to put it to the vote of the people, and the vote of the people have to say, yeah, we want to incur millions of dollars of debt in order to make sure that we have the money necessary to make sure that the system is always going to be operational. Some, some on staff think that, that vote would be a challenge, because people want all the services, but they're not maybe necessarily willing to pay their fair share. So I think no matter who runs it, you're going to run into a situation in this district about the long-term viability of, of this water system. That's my personal opinion. So I don't, I don't blame any landowner for, for saying, hey, I see this writing on the wall, and what can I do to try to bring this within my circle of control? Because right now, it's not in their circle of control. It's a difficult discussion. Where I struggle is the benefit to the district and what sort of a precedent does this, does this set? Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you're on the right, going in the right direction. You have a five-member board up here. None of us are experts in water or plumbing or anything else. That's why we have staff. What we should be getting is information from staff saying, because right now, it is, we're the directors of the board, and it's our responsibility. So they should say, hey, getting rid of this group of people is a great thing, because they're going to be a drain on our, on our resources. Or they should say, getting rid of these people is going to put a drain on what we have remaining. I, I don't know how we make a decision without having some information besides somebody saying, you can do it or you can't. I mean, it's just a whim. That's all, Mr. Chair.
May I bring up the petition around this one? And really, my only question is, going back to what I was saying, if this water system remained under the operation of, of the county and its professional staff, would it, would this still be necessary or not?
Hi, Chairman Lincolnfelter. My name is Tyler Engel. I'm the President of High Desert Land Holding. Not sure what she was saying about the, the enrolled agent or whatever. I'm the one that set it up. I'm an owner of it. So I think maybe she was looking at the wrong one there. But, but yeah, we're just trying to, to bring it under our control a little bit. It is an older system, and they're actually getting close to their state allocated water count right now. They only have a few hundred left, and, and we're planning to need thousands. And we're, we want to have a, a new system for a new area. We don't want to have problems with it. We're going to pay for it ourselves, and so that it's a self-confined area with its own, own water system. We don't want to add on to problems of the, the Golden Valley Improvement District. They can, they can keep, you know, the fees as, as low as they want, which they've made very clear in the past, that that's what they, they want. They don't want to overbuild it. They don't want to, to plan too far in the future. They want to keep the fees low. And so because of that, historically, they haven't proactively done a bunch of improvements. Right now, they need a new well, and, and they're about out of allocations as it is. The other big thing is, is our worry of, of what happens long-term with control, whether the, the Board of Supervisors controls it, whether it goes to them or a third party. It's just such a big risk for us and for us to be able to, to start making investments and, and decisions to move towards providing housing. We, we have to have some stability. And with the huge question marks, it makes it really risky to, to go one way or the other when we don't know a year from now, it's in, it's in a private board's landowners' ownership, and, and could they make it very difficult for us to, to progress, to get answers with, to work with their engineers versus controlling how, how that might, might go on our own? Sorry, did I, I answer your question there?
Yeah, I think so. It just boiled down, my question was if the county, because I think we, we sort of kicked that can down the road till next September. If that, if the water system can, can continue to be operated by the, the county and its professional staff, and would this still be necessary?
Yeah, I mean, we, if there was a way to ensure that and lock that in perpetuity, we'd be much more willing to work with GVID, but because the board can change, and at any time, the control can be voted on by you and change, it's, it's still a question mark for us.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Ankers.
Hi there. You know, every meeting, people come up here and they either want us to make, you know, take over, maintain a road, or, or change a zoning, and it's sort of the same issue. I mean, when you decided to buy that land for your development, didn't you do the research and, and, right?
Yeah.
Didn't you do, he was talking about due diligence, right? So did you know going in that this was going to be part of your plan? You bought the land knowing that you were going to ask us for this? Or did this all happen when this was going on? But your issues that you brought to us are about capacity, and it's about, you know, how much, but you had to have known that when you bought the land.
Yeah, yeah. So when we bought it, there, there wasn't the current discussion going on on whether to hand control off to someone else at all. But with either route, there's, there's a destination of serving the area with water. Some of them are just going to be longer and more expensive, I feel like, than, than others. And so staying in GVID, I think eventually we could get water serviced there. You'd have to go back to the state and, and petition for, for more water counts and then work with the GVID's engineers, see what exactly would have to be done to their overall system to service all of the, the new, the new, the new homeowners potentially there. So there is a, a path there or going, going private. So we, we figured either way, we could service water eventually. But we do feel like this would be best for, for the public good, that we can control this and get it advanced more, more quickly, hopefully with a reliable system.
Well, it's good for your people. I mean, let's, let's be honest. And again, it goes back to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a member of the public, I think.
Well, I mean, for your development. You knew what I meant. You know, again, I just have trouble with people who buy under certain rules, and then they want, they come to us to change them. It just seems that all this stuff was kind of all public knowledge. I don't know how long you've owned the land for, frankly, I don't. How long have you owned the land?
Less than a year.
Okay, there you go. So all of this was going on before you purchased the land. So, you know, and, and I understand the unknown. It's an unknown. But again, and Chairman Lincolnfelter brought it. But again, and Chairman Lingefelter brought it up, if the board of supervisors maintained control as the board of directors, would that make your mind at ease? And there's always uncertainty. There's uncertainty in everything.
Yep.
But you bought into land that was in a district. And I think about, you know, where I live in Bullhead City, you know, it's all works together. If we don't, if a whole development said, okay, we don't want to be part of Bullhead City anymore, we want our own, it would be a hit, you know? And I think everybody kind of understands this when you buy your property. So, you know, I understand both sides, but, you know, I think I'm leaning in one direction. Thanks.
Other commentary? Supervisor Bishop.
Yes, I think another part of the equation is the fact that Engel Homes wants to build housing development. They want to build affordable housing. The Golden Valley community that, at least the part of the community that we have heard from, is not welcoming this type of development in Golden Valley. They only want larger properties. So I think Engel Homes is feeling the pushback from those comments and the conspiracy theories about all this secret stuff going on, and I kind of understand where they're coming from.
Can I...
Order, please.
Can I make a statement?
Go ahead.
Can I answer, Hildy? Yeah, I mean, some of the emails that were talked about today, part of the conspiracy theory, were emails from Mike Garman. So very early on, before we even purchased this property, we opened up communication with county staff, which is Mike Garman, before I moved to the city of Kingman. And he kind of did a very good job of laying out of what we could expect to do, right? And so to answer your question, did we do due diligence? Yeah, quite a bit. And they'll probably find them in their emails that they've requested. But so we had an idea, and then the controversy came, right? Now we're new property owners, right? Now we've made our purchase of approximately 600 acres. And then a controversy about a surcharge, a well surcharge, kind of becomes a politically hot button, right? I'm sure you've all gotten emails about well surcharges. That seemed like it also turned in. When that issue went away, the issue that stuck was the residents petitioning the county to get their district back. If you were to put yourself in our shoes, right, do you think we're in a more stable situation, having the residents of Golden Valley be our board versus the board of supervisors? So maybe we're here out of a reflex to get some stability in our project, so.
Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chair, they keep bringing up comments about if they split off, they can go down and see about water. Now, I'm used to the improved district and the way water's done on the river. I'm not so familiar with any water rights tied to this property. Offhand, I would think if the improved district is a certain size and has so many water rights, like you talk about, everybody could have so many gallons a day or something, if that includes these gentlemen, their property, then when they're let out, does that water right go with them? I don't, doesn't sound that way. It sounds like they're going to apply for more water rights. I think the staff needs to get with us and to get a better explanation of what it means for us as a board of directors before we make any decision.
Yeah. Director Lotosky, do you want to come to the podium? The way groundwater works in rural Arizona is when it's in the ground, it's considered a public resource. When you pump it out, then there might be a private property right to it. But I think that's not really what they were talking about. They may were talking about maybe the number of allocations that you guys have, that you're able to serve. Is that correct?
Chairman Lingefelter, that is...
Did you speak to Supervisor Johnson's point as well?
Supervisor Johnson, that is correct. I want to make it quite clear that there is an ample assured water supply for the existing properties within Golden Valley Improvement District, but I need to caveat that by stating that by and large, most all of our allocations were assigned to the vacant properties back in the early 90s. Those were the vacant property owners that were paying the assessments on the core infrastructure of GVID. So they received, based on their property size, whether it be five acres, 10 acres, 20 acres, 40 acres, I'm just going to speak off of pure memory, I believe 40-acre parcels, and don't quote me, but I believe they received about 10 water allocations. And that's largely thought of back then as sufficient for 40 acres, even if they were to split, but maybe not to a density of a modern subdivision. So as it relates to the policy and procedure, I come back to the policy and procedure, where under Section 2.4, if there was a substantial density of development happening within the district, then that applicant would bear the responsibility for finding additional assured water supply through ADWR at their own cost. If assured water supply existed, then it would just come down to the applicant then determining whether there'd be enough production capacity. Now, I'm speaking of the mechanical production capacity, pumping water. If that is sufficient, if that's not sufficient, then that applicant would bear that expense as well. So two different considerations, the assured water supply as well as the production capacity. But again, I want to get back to the overall district. There's a lot of vacant land in that district. And at one time in the early 90s, all of those vacant property owners were assessed, as well as some developed properties, for their fair share of that water system. That generated about 6,200 water allocations that were distributed. A few of them were held back, and actually more than a few, were held back as unassigned. Currently, our unassigned water allocations are about 400. So.
Mr. Chair. Supervisor Johnson.
I think you're just confusing us more. You put in a, well, the county put in a water system. They took in a certain area.
Yes.
Let's say 1,000 acres, whatever. Now, when you drilled the well, did you decide that, not you, but whoever put it in decided that will serve so many lots? I don't understand, because if you have 1,000 acres or whatever the size of this is, everybody should be able to share equally in the water. And if this gentleman wants to put in homes in his area, then he would have a fee that he has to pay for the more homes than a guy that has 40 acres or something. I don't understand, we were talking about assured water. If we took, if all those people formed an improvement district, and that offer was pretty big there, they should all have water. I still think that somebody needs to come back with a better explanation to us before we can make a decision on letting somebody go or keeping them in. That's all mine. Thank you, Mr. Lotosky, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Additional discussions? Supervisor Angus.
No, I was just wondering if we should continue this item to get the more information before we make a decision.
I'd open it up to the board for a motion.
Chairman Lingefelter.
Supervisor Bishop.
Motion to continue for one month, the first meeting in January.
Okay, you've heard that motion, continuing this item until the first meeting in January 2024.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. We have one more public hearing, item number 50. I'm going to open the public hearing on item number 50. We have nobody signed up to speak on item number 50. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on item number 50? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 50. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Lingefelter, motion to approve.
Thank you. You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Regular agenda, item number 51. Director Lotosky.
Chairman Lingefelter, motion to approve.
Great, I will second that. Additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 52. Does anyone wish to hear from Director Lotosky?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 53. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Lingefelter, motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 54. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Lingefelter, motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 55.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
This is my item. I don't know if we had a chance to read it. Option B was the one that I was proposing, where staff has the ability to do something remotely, unless, you know, board members or somebody says there's something important that we'd actually need him here for, but they can show everything on screen and everything else. So I don't see a need for A at all. I would make a motion to approve item or option B.
Second.
Heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 56. Anyone from HR? Okay, here we go. I assume all of these have been vetted by Manager Elters and your staff in HR and everybody else that needs to look at these things.
Mr. Chairman and board member, your assumption is correct.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 57. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Lingefelter, motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 58. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
May I say something?
Supervisor Angus.
Yeah, this item is back because I had requested that it came back. I had some, I had some questions for the applicant on this, and I'm happy to say that she has worked with me and gotten the answers to the questions, and I feel confident that they'll do a good job. So I'll second Supervisor Bishop's motion.
Thank you. You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 59.
Chairman Lingefelter.
Supervisor Bishop.
I just wanted to point out to this board that I am the only person serving on the board currently that is not running for a higher office or running for reelection. So I just wanted to throw that out there at the board. So chooses, I would be happy to serve as the chairman so that we can have kind of a non-political chairman.
I'd actually, I'm going to make a motion that Supervisor Angus serve as the board chairman from January 1 of 2024 through December 31 of 2024.
May I say something?
Yes.
It is my turn if we do this rotation correctly, and I understand Supervisor Bishop's concerns, but how I look at it is that you always want somebody who has accountability in this seat. If you're not running for anything, your decision-making may be different. And so I think that we should keep the rotation going, and I would be happy to be the chairman for next session.
Order. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion in second.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
I hope we wouldn't get into this, but I have a question here. Has any travel been taken since we put a ban in by Supervisor Angus?
Yes, I have. I signed up for the CSA Summit before we did that travel ban, and I, since I am the legislative liaison, I believe that that was the correct thing to do. But going forward, as you saw today, I would bring it back in front of the board.
You've been reimbursed for that, correct?
Yes, I have. It was in my budget.
When we have a vote by the board, where a lot of us are in the minority an awful lot of the time, I believe we have to follow the majority of the board, and for that reason, I can't support your chairmanship.
Thank you. Heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. I have a motion for vice chair. Supervisor Angus.
Who's turn? I think Supervisor Johnson's turn.
I make a motion to...
Actually, it'd be, if we go with the regular rotation, it would be me as vice.
Do you? Okay. I make a motion that Supervisor Bishop be appointed vice chair.
All second. Additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered.
I bet it was...
Item number 60. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Lingefelter, motion to approve.
Thank you. You've heard that motion.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 61. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we started this process of the public lands, and we've had so many issues from the time we started talking about this commission that we voted to set up. And we haven't seen much movement. I had asked the county manager to do an update last meeting, and he did. And I just want to make sure that everything keeps moving because we're set to start this up in January. And just yesterday, I got a call from Doug Heaton, who's on the American Lands Council, who advocates for the transfer of public lands. And he was telling me that there's some very, very exciting things happening in the beginning of the year, and that it will affect Arizona in a very positive way. And so I asked him if he would be amenable to perhaps come speak to this commission in one of their first meetings, and he said he'd be happy to. And I think that would be a great kickoff for this commission that will be hopefully advising the board on public lands issue, whether it be closures or, you know, leases for renewable energies and everything that's going to affect us in our decision-making. So that's really all this was. And I wanted to know if there is some kind of form that our appointees have to fill out, because I haven't seen one. And I know that they did it last time. Like any commission, they have to go through a background check and all those kinds of things, and I haven't seen or heard any update on what is going to happen with this commission.
Andrew Elters.
Thank you, Chairman Supervisor Angus. Indeed, we have the form, and we have, to refresh your memories, 11 commissioners are needed, one from the current board and 10 appointed and/or nominated. The appointed are five from each, one from each district. The nominated are related to the subject matter experts, and they could come from any district. We have the form. We have Aaron Shergen Cost emailed all the board members last week with the bylaws and the form. Again, I reached out to the board members as well individually to discuss it. So far, we have received two appointments, but no nominations yet, and the nominations would pertain to the five different categories, farming, ranching being one, recreation being second, environmental being third, renewable energy being four, assessor appraisal, private property being the fifth, and last one. We envision, as board approved, this will be a four-year term. We envision the approvals going from January, effective January 2, 2024. And Ms. Anderson, Jenny Anderson, will clerk for this commission, and Eric, Aaron Shergen Cost will provide admin support. So we're ready. The forms are out, the form is out there. Please send them in. We're ready to bring them in front of you as a board to complete the process. And then we hope, we envision that the first commissioners' meeting will take place in January of next year.
Thank you. Thank you. I just really wanted to kind of make sure this is moving along because sometimes when we're getting things started, they kind of fall between the cracks, and I do think this is important, just to remind everybody, the reason that we came up with this one is because when we did one about five, six years ago, when the BLM was going to shut down recreation trails without any public input, we put a lot of pressure on them, and they abandoned that. So we had success with that. I'm hoping for similar success. If nothing else, we'll be keeping on top of all the information that's coming so rapidly at us from every direction, like we spoke about earlier with some of our zoning issues. So I, I think this will be really good. I just want to make sure that it keeps moving, and so Aaron is, is like, let's just say, the project manager of this. So everything goes through her. She's making sure that it keeps on schedule, on track.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll have, and we'll have an update from her. Well, we have one more meeting, maybe at our next meeting, an update about it, because we don't have a second meeting in December, and we're supposed to start in January, so that's still a kind of a tight schedule now.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board Members and Supervisor Angus, yes, we're ready for you, Board Members, to send us appointments and nominations, and unless we receive those, the update next Board meeting is gonna be the same as this Board meeting.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, we'll move on to item number 62. We have a number of people that have signed up to speak. We're gonna let them go first. The first is John Mallory. I'm sorry.
Chairman Lincoln Felder, I would like, before people speak, and this is, of course, your, at your discretion, I want them to hear a letter that we received that was not in the backup, so maybe it will have them thinking in a different direction, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I'll allow that. You'd like to have Park Anderson read that into the record?
Yes, I've asked the Clerk of the Court to read this. We received this, I received it this morning, and if we had gotten it any earlier, it would have been in the backup for full transparency. And I do think it's important for the discussion we're gonna have and for maybe the comments that you're gonna make. It's, it's a little long.
This letter is dated November 19, 2023, sent via email to the Board of Supervisors regarding counting ballots manually instead of by automatic tabulating equipment. Dear Supervisors, I understand that you will be voting tomorrow on whether to direct Mojave County Elections Department to count the ballots for the 2024 elections by hand rather than automatic tabulating equipment. Before you take that vote, I want to make sure you know that a yes vote would direct your Elections Department to violate the law. As Arizona's Chief Law Enforcement Officer, I have an obligation to warn you that the legal consequences would be serious. Equally important, I am concerned that this Board has received incorrect legal advice from bad-faith actors who are attempting to sow doubt in Arizona's elections and ultimately undermine Arizona's democratic process. Full hand counts are impracticable to perform within the time permitted to certify election results, less accurate than tabulating machines, and more importantly, are illegal under Arizona law. The resulting delays, inaccurate results, and illegal procedures from hand counts will then be used to call into doubt valid election results. The Board should not endorse this attack on the democratic process. One, directing the Elections Department to hand count all ballots would violate the law. It is well settled in Arizona that counties have only the authority expressly or by necessary implication delegated to them by Constitution or by the Legislature. Van Glieder v. Arizona Department of Revenue, 252, Arizona 481, 48, Paragraph 24, 2022. Likewise, county officers may exercise no powers except those specifically granted by statute and in the manner fixed by statute. Hancock v. McCarrill, 188, Arizona 492, 498, approximately 1996. The citation is omitted. The powers of counties and county officers are strictly construed, and any doubt as to the power sought to be exercised must be resolved against them. Van Glieder, 252, Arizona, at 492, Paragraph 45, Citation omitted. Arizona law does not allow counties to make a blanket decision to count ballots by hand. Instead, the relevant statutes repeatedly provide that ballots shall be counted by automatic tabulating equipment. See ARS State Statutes 16449, 16468, 16602, 16621, 16622. In particular, Section 16622A of the Arizona Revised Statutes provides that the result printed by the vote-tabulating equipment, to which have been added write-in and early votes, shall, when certified by the Board of Supervisors or other officer in charge, constitute the official canvas of each precinct or election district. Except to an expressly allowed-by statute, votes counted by hand do not constitute part of the official canvas. Thus, the proposed measure could end up disenfranchising your constituents. The officer in charge of elections may direct that ballots be counted manually only if it becomes impracticable to count all or a part of the ballots with tabulating equipment, ARS State Statute 16621C. No evidence supports a general finding that counting ballots with tabulating equipment is impracticable. Rather, it is, sorry, rather, as the recent analysis from the Mojave County Elections Department shows, manually counting all ballots would be impracticable in several ways. See Mojave County Ballot Hand Tally Analysis, and there is link to the website, explaining that a full manual count may compromise confidentiality, hurt the timeliness and accuracy of results, and significantly increase costs. Outside of a specific scenario in which counting ballots with tabulating equipment is impracticable, the Legislature has not provided counties with authority to count ballots by hand instead of via tabulating equipment, and counties may not independently choose to do so. See State v. Stapley, 227, Arizona 61, 64 through 65, Paragraph 15, approximately 2011. The Board can exercise only those powers specifically granted to it by the Legislature. The Elections Procedure Manual similarly makes it clear that ballots shall be counted by machine. For example, sorry, for example, Chapter 11 provides for a limited hand count audit, the purpose of which is to compare the result of the machine count to the hand count to assure that the machines are working properly and accurately counting votes. Elections Procedures Manual at 213. The manual goes on to provide a four-stage process for hand counts. One, precinct hand count. Two, second precinct hand count. Three, expanded precinct hand count. And four, full precinct hand count. It authorizes a full precinct hand count audit only when certain error thresholds were met in stages one, two, and three. In 2022, Cochise County engaged in a misguided and illegal effort to do a full hand count audit of all ballots cast in the 2022 general election. The Superior Court concluded that this was unlawful. The Court of Appeals agreed. See Arizona All for Retired Americans Incorporated v. Crosby, P. 3D, 2023 WL 6854102, Arizona Court of Appeals, October 18, 2023. A complete hand count audit is permitted only after a multi-step process that includes conducting the preliminary and expanded audits described in State Statute 1602C through D, interpreting State Statute 16602B through E, to allow a county to begin with a full hand count audit of all precincts would render the statute's multi-step process superfluous. We will not, we will not interpret a statute in a manner that renders a provision superfluous. I don't like that word.
Order.
Yeah, blah, blah, blah.
A, a court would reach the same conclusion here. Indeed, the letter from Brian Blem in your packet does not cite any legal authority for his unsupported theory that a county can hand count all ballots. That should tell you all you need to know. Two, the Board should not direct the Elections Department to violate the law. We all took an oath to support the laws of the state of Arizona and to bear true faith and allegiance to them, ARS State Statute 38, 231. To uphold that oath, the Board should not direct the Elections Department to act illegally. If it does, we will promptly sue and obtain a court order. The Court may also hold members of the Board who voted for an illegal action liable for misconduct, see ARS State Statute 11-223, and subject them to personal liability for any public funds used for this illegal purpose, see ARS State Statute 35-212C. Those encouraging you to hand count election results are encouraging you to violate the law. In addition to the above civil remedies, you should be aware that an illegally expanded hand count may result in very, in various felony and misdemeanor criminal penalties. We hope you will choose not to violate the law, and thus that it will not be necessary for us to consider whether criminal prosecution is warranted for conducting an illegal hand count. Three, conclusion. I urge you to fulfill your oath by declining to direct the Elections Department to violate the law and by not risking that you violate the law yourselves. My office is committed to upholding the sanctity of Arizona's elections and democratic process. It will
Order.
It will pursue to the fullest extent of the law all possible remedies to ensure the sanctity of Arizona's elections. Sincerely, Chris Mays, Arizona Attorney General. This was copied also to Matthew Smith, Mojave County Attorney.
Thank you. Order. Order, please. All right, we're gonna get into this. The folks that have signed up to speak, the first being John Mallory. John Mallory. Brian Garcia. Just state your name for the record, please.
Yes, of course. Hello, my name is Brian Garcia, Chairman, members of the Board, County Administration. Again, my name is Brian Garcia. I'm a native, born and raised in Arizona. I am with All Voting is Local Action, which is based in Tempe. I want to thank you for your service and for the opportunity to speak today. I rise to ask you to consider the following. One, whether it's fiscally responsible to move forward with this proposed action. Two, the high risk of disenfranchising Mojave voters. As Chairman previously stated, there haven't been issues in Mojave. So now, why should we start designing problems now? And three, are you willing to enter self-inflicted litigation, risk your own pro-service reputations, and potentially leave the county worse than potentially you found it? It is my hope that as elected officials, you abide by your oath of office and duty by voting no on this item. Thank you.
Order. I appreciate your raised enthusiasm, but if we could not have people clap. Alex Guleta.
Chairperson, Supervisors. My name is Alex Guleta, and I'm the Arizona State Director for All Voting is Local Action out of Tempe. I've been the Arizona State Director for All Voting is Local since 2018, and have been engaged in voting rights work since that time. Prior to that, I was a legal aid lawyer for 33 years and did a lot of civil rights advocacy. I'm here today to better understand what would lead public-minded community servants like yourselves to consider this hand count proposal. What would lead public-minded community servants to choose a slower process, like hand counts, over a faster, more efficient, tested, verified, and audited process? What would lead public-minded community servants to choose an error-filled process over the proven accuracy of mechanical tabulators? Order. What would lead public-minded community servants to choose a process subject to partisan manipulation, spoliation of ballots, over an objective process where the voters decide the results as reflected by the tested, verified, audited, and objective results from your county's tabulators? What happens when a group of people come here next month and say, "We don't trust banks. We want for your county audit this year, we want you to withdraw all the money from all the accounts. Let's put it in a room. We're gonna hire hundreds of people. We're gonna pay them $15 an hour, and then we're gonna ask them to count it up and balance the books." They have a catchy slogan, "One day, one audit." Okay, are we gonna do that? That's what this is. Last week, the Pinell County Attorney, before the Board of Supervisors, when they were considering a hand count proposal, was quoted as saying, quote, "You'll be sued, you will lose, and the Attorney General's office will bring charges," unquote. What would lead public-minded community servants to go down that road, to violate that oath? Nothing. I hope nothing would lead you to do that, and I'm asking you to vote no. But if you're inclined to vote yes, I recommend you pause this decision and perform some independent and objective due diligence and objective analysis about the promises of legal representation and legal protection that were offered in Cochise County last fall, and ask the supervisors there how that worked out for them. Thank you very much for your time and for your community service.
Casey Close.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Casey Close, and I'm the Voting Rights Director for Progress Arizona, based out of Phoenix. I am enthused to see so many people here today participating in our democracy. I think all voters deserve to have their votes counted, and Arizonans have an interest in timely certification of the election, and implementing a 100% hand count threatens the voices of all Arizona voters. Hand counting ballots is significantly less accurate, more expensive, and more time-consuming than using tabulation equipment, and the trial conducted by the Mojave County Elections Department found that vote tabulation is much more reliable and efficient than the people they could hire, in addition to being significantly less expensive. This body must certify election results in a timely manner. A hand count threatens your ability to do that, to meet the statutory timeline, and could disenfranchise Mojave County voters and all Arizona voters. I ask that you vote against implementing a 100% hand count of ballots because all voters deserve to have their votes counted.
Don Bishop.
My name is Don Bishop, and I say, "Don't break the law, but have a backup." When I was in school, Father Hanayaki proved it to me. He said, "We took all these tests. He copied them three times. He gave them to three different people, and we still had mistakes counting them." But why not have a backup? So you have the machine working. Well, let's have numbers on all the ballots, and let's put a second ballot, copy the ballot, have a stack of second ballots in a safe. We don't care, but at least you've got a backup. What if those ballots get chewed up in the machine? What if somebody pours coffee on them? You got the second ballot with numbers on it. You got five... You've got 585, 585 here. You've got a backup. If you don't have backup, in my business, when I own bars, if I didn't have backup on everything, it was ridiculous. So let's not break the law. Use the machines, but when the guy writes up his ballot, copy it once, same number, same number. You could look at the numbers and see if it looked alike. Put a pile of ballots in a safe if you want, but have backup. If you don't have backup, you're not running a business. That's all I got to say.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Teresa Evans, and I am a resident of Kingman, and I am also a poll worker and early voting employee. As Yogi Berra once said, "You can observe a lot by just watching." I have been sitting here, watching and listening this meeting, but more so the meeting prior to this. I've been hearing our public servants try and destroy our election system because a candidate they backed lost. He has been claiming the election was rigged and ballots were changed in favor of his opponent. A tourist protest in Washington on January 6th proved how far these people would go.
Order. I'm going to pause you for a moment. Ma'am, I'm going to pause you for just a moment. I understand that there's emotions that are very high on both sides of this issue, but this is a venue where everybody gets to speak, and I would just ask that everybody control their emotions and not blurt out like schoolchildren. I mean, let's just have this professional, okay? Please continue.
Tabulating machines have been used for over 100 years or longer. It was used in the 1890 census and started being used in elections in the early 1900s. Research has found that hand counting are significantly less accurate, more expensive, and time-consuming than using tabulation equipment. This is an MIT Election Data and Science Lab report. Mr. Charles Stewart III is the director of this report. Also, NPR Radio also said that scanner to be more accurate. I strongly suggest Mr. Birelli and those supervisors who support hand counts to do their homework before they put ideas like this forward. If you remember, it took us three days to do a sample hand count in the beginning of the year. Thank you.
Christopher Darte, Mojave County taxpayer. I'm in favor of Item 62 with a caveat. Attached to this item is a letter from the Chair of the Mojave County Republican Party promising the support of 300 volunteers to assist in a hand count. I find that interesting, commendable, but curious. Where are the Democrats? Where is their 300? Are they not concerned? Are they not willing to participate in the count? They've got to be. Devil's advocate, could this volunteer squad signify a significant number of Republicans' counting votes? And could it be a problem if the majority of the vote counters are in fact Republican? Could there be blowback in the GOP's face if Mojave County Dems lose in 2024? And I would assume that an equal amount of Republicans, Democrats, and Independents would all be required to participate in this process. So I'm going to turn that over to the legals who would have an answer to that, but I'm assuming that they've already considered this. Whatever the conclusion, hand counting is absolutely preferable to machines, in my opinion. We've seen what's happened. Handled correctly and legally, the only way to assure an accurate vote count is to revert to the old-fashioned way with humans at the helm. Please vote yes to direct the Elections Department to carry out the hand tabulation of ballots in the 2024 election. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. My name is Charlotte Costello. I'm from Bullhead City. Most of what I wanted to say has been equally said by, starting with Attorney General Mays and others who have made their comments, but I have one question I'd like to pose to everybody who considers hand counting to be the standard. Why have we not heard about election integrity issues and we must have hand counting prior to the 2020 election? Nobody brought it up before. It never bothered anyone before. But the seeds of doubt were sown at that time and spread like wildfire across the country and in many, many communities. People have gone to court, people have challenged, and failed every time. The thing about hand counting, as was very clearly brought out last time I attended a meeting like this by both the County Recorder and Director of Elections, it's not just impractical, it's completely unreliable because humans make mistakes. That's why, at the end of every election, before you get the results to certify, a canvas is done. And I've participated in that, and it was eye-opening to me. We had human beings looking at ballots, counting them, and coming up with the same numbers time and time again. That, to me, confirms that my ballot is not just safe, it's counted. Someone mentioned the budget shortfall earlier and said, "I don't remember how much it is. I believe 18 million is still on the table." The last thing I read. So also in the last meeting, the cost of doing a hand count was given at 1.1 million, probably more. So my second question would be, where does that money come from? We're already talking about cutting budgets for equipment that is needed in the county, but, okay, 1.1 million, we'll find it somewhere to do this next year so we can make sure ballots are counted. We can already make sure that's what the machines are for. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Chris Bondi. I'm from Bullhead City. This is about the $18.1 million that we're behind. We're all in this together regardless of who we're with, for Republican, Democrat, Then you want to add 1.1 million with a hand count? And it doesn't make any sense to me. I'd just like if we all just worked together. That would be my answer, but, you know, thanks for listening to me.
It's Weber, Sharon Weber. I live at 715 Parkview Avenue in Kingman, Arizona. It's right over the hill. Okay? And I'm here today because I am opposed to going back to a hand count. I'm not going to elaborate on what's already been stated by the Attorney General and so many other speakers. There is not one scrap of evidence, not one. And I would challenge any of you to show me one that shows that a hand count is more accurate in any way than a machine count. Indeed, we have seen that Dominion won a suit against a massive media, Fox News, because they allowed statements to be made imputing the accuracy of their machines. And there's a second suit coming. There are also several people who are under indictment right now for claiming fraud. I would ask if we take a moment for the hecklers to be done?
Yeah, order, please. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Now, in addition to that, let's look at the cost. When you talk about 1.1 million dollars, that is what is projected. You all know, I'm sure, that when you launch into a project, it generally costs more in the long run. And in a project like this, where people are going to be waiting for a long period of time for a hand count to be done, there are still going to be people on both sides that are unhappy with the results. Does anybody remember the mess, the chaos in Maricopa County with people with guns out in the streets threatening those who were counting votes inside a building, screaming to stop the count? Now, increase the time to count votes here exponentially. I know I'm not going to be out there demanding or threatening anyone, but I cannot speak for everyone in the county. So more than likely, you are going to run into a scenario where you are going to need more security than what we have currently available in the county. This is an unnecessary move. Every one of you here, I will not say who I voted for or did not vote for, but I did not doubt that every one of you here was duly elected. And I did not ever, have not ever called into question your positions, nor Senator Birelli's.
Thank you, ma'am. You guys in the front row, can you control yourself, please?
Kenny Works, Jacka, Arizona. We've come a long ways since hanging chads. Rush Limbaugh bought one of those machines, took it home with him, and tried to figure out a way to make a chad hang. The only way he could do it was to put 11 ballots on the machine and then try and punch it, and then he could get a hanging chad. That's proof that the hanging chads were a result of putting too many ballots on the machine at one time. There is fraud. Whenever there's an opportunity for fraud, there's going to be fraud. It's just a fact of life. I prefer the method where four people count, tabulate the ballots, goes down the table, goes into the tabulation machine, the numbers should match. We already have the tabulation machines. All we need are the four people per precinct, three people actually doing the tabulation, one person for a break, or giving 20 minutes in each spot. Each person only has to do one hour in a spot, and then be the person who stuffs the ballots in the tabulation machine. It's not, it doesn't seem to me like an unwarranted request for resources to accomplish this. You need a table long enough for four people to sit at and tabulate the ballots, and they need graph paper or some sort of a tablet to tabulate the ballots on. Four against, four against, four against. How long is that going to take? How many questions are on the ballot? If there's 15 questions on the ballot, that means each person seated at the table doing the tabulation only has to do five questions. It shouldn't take that long. It starts as soon as the voting starts. You don't wait till the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jerry Woods. I am a voting resident of Mojave County in the Kingman area. I'm not here to argue the point of whether or not the current way to count ballots is correct or not correct, but I have come in contact with a lot of people that have discussed, told me that they have some doubts. That is what concerns me. We have, in the past, I realize, some time ago, counted ballots by hand. Evidently, because we have modern technology, now we have this wonderful way of doing it. I'm not convinced myself, but there's one aspect to having people, a greater number of people, count ballots, is that it draws in, and I would like to include myself, a greater number of voters to participate in the process. To me, that is a good thing. Bring them in. Let them touch the ballot, look at the ballot. I personally would be honored to go through that process. Thank you.
Chairman Lincoln Felder, Supervisors, my name is Jeff Rider. I live in Golden Valley, and I am the District One Director for the Mojave County GOP. As I've said before, I speak to a lot of concerned voters, and the single biggest concern I hear almost every day is election integrity. As a matter of fact, I believe it's the defining issue of our time and one in which every other issue we have comes from. It leads to people like Joe Biden and Katie Hobbs being selected and installed rather than elected by we, the people. Over the past decade, we have seen the slow decline in the confidence of our elections, but since 2020, that decline has accelerated to the point where it's out of control and was most on display right here in Arizona, in Maricopa County, when Fox News called a very close race, less than an hour after the polls closed while people were still in line to vote. After that, we saw the counting stop in six states, the late-night vote dumps going mainly for Biden, the water pipe bursting in Georgia, and five-to-eight-point leads for Trump turning into wins for Biden overnight. We watched it in real time, and it's the reason why, when I moved to Arizona, I got involved in local politics, and that's the reason why I'm speaking now. And then we watched that happen all over again in 2022, selected, not elected. So why am I recapping this? Because by voting to authorize the hand counting of ballots, we have a chance to start the process of restoring confidence in our voting system. We can do it right here, right now, and lead the way so that other counties in Arizona can make the same, so they can have the courage to make the same choices. Thank you.
Scotty from Bullhead. Ginny, can you read that letter again from, you guys are no fun today. You want to stay here till 3:00? Ah, what we need is Matt Smith and Ryan Esplin, and I wouldn't mind hearing from a judge today. Matt Smith, you need to stand up and do what the board says. I understand he wouldn't do what you guys were going to vote on or whatever. He wasn't going to go along with what you guys said, so you ought to fire his ass.
Order.
I wouldn't mind hearing a judge, like Judge Jansen does a lot of political things. Where's he at today? Where's Matt Smith today? I see Ryan's here, but he's got no choice. Sick days, you don't get them? It sounds like Chris Mays is, it sounds like they're out to get Trump, just like they do in New York and Georgia. You know, threatening you guys with jail time again. This ain't your first time. We need to stand up to Chris Mays and Mrs. Hobbs. Governor Hobbs, oh, boy. She's the one that shot down the ones where you look through a dollar bill. What was that, Sonny? Where'd it go? That thing that he brought you a couple years ago where it had the watermarks on it? Why we can't have those ballots? It costs about 10 cents more a ballot. I'll pay the 10 cents when I get up there and leave the place. I'll put my dime in. I'll put my dime in. But this just sounds like Chris Mays and Hobbs are out to get you guys.
I'm Maggie Passaro from Kingman. I have breathing issues, so I kind of have a time when I get a little bit emotional. First off, it is in our Constitution that gives the people the power and the authority in regards to anything we do about elections. I submitted a video that I recorded. I don't know who has that DVD. It's about 53 minutes, and it is a declaration, an affidavit, from Tori Morris. She is a private contractor with experience gathering and analyzing foreign intelligence and acted as a localizer during deployment of projects and operations both outside the United States and inside. She's a trained crypto-linguist, holds a completed degree in molecular and cellular physiology, and has formal training in other sciences such as computational linguistics, game theory, algorithmic aspects of machine learning, predictive analytics, among others. She goes into further details of her qualifications. She has a credible reputation and can provide documentation and proof of her declaration. The detailed information she provides in the video is most critical and of urgent matter when considering whether or not to continue the use of electronic machines for our elections. I have one question for you. What value do you put on your freedom? What value do you put on my freedom? The freedom of this country? There is more than enough evidence in that video given by Tori, and she has firsthand knowledge that the fact is that electronic machines have not been lawfully and legally accredited since 2017. They were unlawfully using those machines since then because ProVNV had lost their accreditation. That was the federal regulation testing. I get a little bit confused. Anyway, if I read it, it's better. "The hardware of the machines has not been examined in Michigan," this is one case, "since 2017 by ProVNV," according to the Michigan's own reporting. ProVNV, whose EAC certification expired on February 24, 2017, was contractual with the state of Wisconsin. If the accredited, non-federal entities have not received their certification, then they are using them unlawfully. Please view that video before you make a decision. Thank you.
Good morning, chairman and supervisors. I'm Elaine Downing. I am the chair of the Mojave County Democrats. I heard with my own ears and saw with my own eyes when the chairman told Sonny Borelli that we did not have a problem here in Mojave County and to go back to Maricopa. I don't know what has happened between now and then, but here we are again. You so doubt in the integrity of the elections every time you bring this up. And I understand that there are a lot of people in this room that doubt the process. I challenge every one of them to volunteer their time and go and watch the observations that you can. Volunteer to be a Republican observer or a Democrat observer. Get involved in that hand audit. We tabulate by machine, but we count by hand four precincts with Republicans and Democrats at every table. There has not been... Anytime there was a mistake, it was the humans that made the mistake. They don't share the number with us. They say, "Go find it again." And when we look, "Oh, there was a ballot over there. We didn't count for that raise." We're already $18 million in the hole. There are people in this building that work very hard, and you are insulting their integrity, all the people that work here on elections in the recorder's office and the registrations office and the elections department, and all the volunteers that have volunteered their time at every election. We are there. We are witnessing it. There are no problems in Mojave County. I would ask that you pay attention to Chris Mays's letter. And if you have questions, you might check with Peggy Judd and Tom Crosby or Kelly Ward, who have been asked to appear in front of a grand jury. Because what you are contemplating is illegal, and you could be held personally liable. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Tanya Dausen, Mojave County taxpayer. I support hand counting. I do not trust the machines at all. And of all the things that the government funds, they must make funding available for election integrity. That should be toward the very top of the list. That's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Good morning, or good afternoon, supervisors. Eva Corbett, Bullhead City. This is not a partisan item. This is for everybody. Hand counting in the primary election, which is what I suggest, we have to protect the Mojave County voters by assuring them that our votes are counted correctly and that every legitimate vote is counted. The best way for that to be done is hand counting. We have already signed up 1,500 volunteers for the county, and we are committed to doing this hand count. We hope... I know you're being threatened by the state again, and that's very serious. But remember, we didn't elect those people.
Order.
My name is Glenda Irwin. I reside north of Kingman in the county. And this is kind of deja vu all over again. I was presenting the last time we did this. I am a retired federal employee. I was a civil servant, like you. In the 2016 election, I was honored to be a volunteer for the observation of the counting of mail-in ballots. I observed democracy at its best. Democrats and Republicans were represented equally at every step of the process, including Allen and Steve entering stacks of ballots into the counting machines. And by the way, the Republican candidate won that election. There was no outrage from anyone demanding the end to the use of those machines. The machines that were used for that election and for many elections for years prior to that were once again used in the 2020 election, where the Republican candidate lost. And all of a sudden, those machines are not to be trusted? As I said in my previous presentation, this would be just another silly and expensive demonstration of how people in power can attempt to create the illusion of efficiency. And Mojave County cannot afford this in so many ways. And I'm wondering why you would be considering this process again. You voted against it last time. I'm not sure why you're bringing it up again. And perhaps, like many politicians these days, it's another act of pandering to the misinformed conspiracy theorists in your constituency to get yourselves reelected. I sincerely hope that you will once again do the right thing and decide to put this outrageous notion away for good. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion and for listening. And I hope that you will consider what I have said before, making your final decision. And thank you very much for allowing the reading of that very important letter.
Good afternoon. Is it afternoon? Good afternoon, chairman and board. It has been my pleasure and my wife's pleasure to live in Kingman, Arizona, after living in corrupt California most of our lives and after that Reno, Nevada. I had a conversation with a supervisor in Reno, Nevada, after the 2018 election, when I lived here on the phone. I worked for a company called Secure Nevada's Future. We educated people, registered them to vote. We educate them what the difference was between conservatism and liberalism, Americanism, communism. We changed the complexion of the Democrat versus the Republican voters in Nevada by a significant amount. When the '20 election came, we were all floored because it didn't work out like we had thought it would because of our efforts. The supervisor informed me that it was the machines. He said, "You're right. The problem is the machines." Dominion may have won a lawsuit against a corrupt news organization. The whole court system, if you followed... Let me back up. If you watch Alphabet News, you don't have a chance to understand what's really going on. The court system in the United States has been totally corrupted. Biden and Trump were in an election. We have... I don't remember the exact numbers of the registered voters. We had X number of million voters registered in the United States. Well, people wondered when they looked at the numbers later because there were 23 million more votes counted than there were registered voter. If you don't think there was fraud, you're living under a rock. Nothing says we have to cheat like making a law against paper and hand counts. 272,000 votes were ineligible that were counted in the 2020 election in Arizona. Maricopa is an Arizona county. Anything that is unconstitutional is null and void according to the law. I appreciate it that you're all listening, but I hope you realize some of the people here are putting out fallacious information. I don't care what expert it is that says hand counts are wrong. They're wrong.
Thank you very much. Katherina Callahan. Is Katherina here? Okay. Jennifer Esposito. She's still here? Oh, yeah.
Count on it. Can't count on it.
Jennifer Esposito, again, candidate for District Four, county supervisor. You cannot put a price on voter confidence. And for all the people who keep regurgitating the lie that Mojave County has broken $18 million upside down, what do we have? $15 million in the rainy day fund? Okay. The $1 million that is estimated accounted included having to rent the fairgrounds that, wait, we already own. Okay. So I'm already on record in favor of this because I think it's an important thing to do. And you can, as was suggested, then run them through the machine. And when you have an issue, you can double-check it. If I was sitting in your seat, this is something I would be willing to go to jail for. And I do not say that lightly. So I'm going to use the rest of my time to read into the record a letter submitted to you in October by my dear friend Jim O'Connor, the chairman of the Arizona Corporation Commission. "Supervisors, 30 years ago, I served as an advisor to the California Senate Select Committee investigating Orange County, California bankruptcy. My most significant takeaway was the influence that a single outside attorney's advice had on that county's elected board of supervisors. He sold them on the urgent need to, quote, 'protect the county by filing for bankruptcy.' The enormous cost of that infamous decision is now in the history books. County vendors, employees, teachers, and many other county government districts who had their surplus cash invested in the county investment pool suffered loss of availability of their monies to pay daily operating expenses, forced to engage outside legal counsel of their own, and resulted in a lack of trust in their local government to act with integrity. Many of you may recall the appeal I made to you just one year ago in my letter sharing the investigation I conducted regarding the vulnerability of voting machines and tabulators in our Arizona elections. I included a video of a workshop I held on October 1, 2022, which included expert witness testimony from 11 national experts on cybersecurity. They unanimously agreed that the above-sided machines and tabulators were more vulnerable to hacking than the average home computer. A small number of you stood bravely in attempts to investigate options on your own to assure all your county voters the sanctity of their votes. The stand was taken in the face of media named calling bullying from others with a self-interest to protect and various state elected officials weaponizing government to attack you individually. The courage you exhibited rivaled that of Daniel in The Lion's Den and David versus Goliath. During this past year, we've had more facts uncovered nationally regarding maladministration of elections throughout the country. We have also seen that our county, state, and federal courts are unwilling to adjudicate, fairly given their hesitancy to address the legal doctrine, quote, "the election slash political question." This has left voters in our state and our 15 counties with significant diminuation of trust in their governments. I believe our system of government works because voters trusted the election process, thereby submitting to the outcome without regard to who won the contest. I further believe that trust has been violated, resulting in large numbers of voters unwilling to participate as they are resigned to believing that their votes don't count. Further, many more are frustrated with what they perceive as a corrupt process with no accountability. Serving in a statewide elected position myself, it is of great concern to me that each of you currently have all the necessary power and authority to fix this problem before our 2024 election season. It will require a majority of each of your boards to stand together to do the right thing for every voter in your counties. Of all difficult problems we deal with in government, this is truly the most nonpartisan. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is George Hill. I'm a resident of Mojave County. I live here in Kingman. I'm glad that that letter was read as well. I have two words for Lord Mays. Stuff it.
Order.
You are under no obligation to take orders from him or anyone above this county. I'll direct your attention to the date on that county. It predates statehood by almost half a century. Every county in this country, which is where elections are controlled ultimately, is anterior to both the federal government and state governments. We are the highest level of law, and you should start acting like the sovereigns that you're supposed to be if you understand the principles of natural law. And I'll bring some wisdom from the mind of a man who's been dead almost 200 years, but his mind outsources all yours put together and many more, everyone in this room, okay? His name is Thomas Jefferson. He had this to say. "It is error alone that requires the force of government. Truth can stand by itself." Why are they so afraid that you might vote to have hand-counted ballots? By the way, we've got 200-plus years of evidence that they're thoroughly reliable. I'm 71. I remember when there was nothing but paper ballots. And although I didn't like the outcome of many an election, I was confident that they were pretty clean. They're worried because even though things are pretty clean here in Mojave County... here in Mojave County, they're worried you're going to set a precedent. That's what they're worried about. And I say to those cowards, those thugs and goons in Phoenix and... And they're the lackeys. They serve the ones at the federal level, which is utterly corrupt and past any kind of reformation. Again, it is error alone that requires the force of government. And these folks that back these machines, that's all they're about: threatening. That's not the way we'd operate. That's why we're not a democracy. I stand with James Madison, regarded as the father of our Constitution. This is what he had to say about democracy. "It is the most vile form of government, entirely incompatible with the rights of property and individual liberty." We are a republic. And if you don't know what that is, I wish I had more time because I could go into greater detail, but you should know or you shouldn't be serving here what the difference is. So again, there's only one right thing to do. "Once to every man in nation comes the moment to decide in the strife of truth with falsehood for the good or evil side. Some great cause, some great decision, offering each the bloom or blight. And the chance goes by forever to ex that darkness and that light." This is your opportunity to do the right thing.
Thank you. So many things I know I'll leave out and I'll kick myself for. But this, I'm sure, by showing hands to the audience how many people have seen 2,000 mules. We have these paid lobbyists that are coming in, attorneys from Phoenix, Mesa, Tucson, and a couple of people from here. I don't know if they're legitimate or not, speaking against this. To every supervisor, I address you with this. Anybody who votes for this, you have my respect, my group's respect, admiration for your sticking your neck out on the line to vote yes and do the right thing. Anybody who votes no, we're lobbying against you forever because this is our freedom at stake. I mean, everybody knows that that Attorney General, whose letter she read, was not legitimately elected. There was all kinds of fraud. This has been proven beyond a doubt. The whole Fox thing that they bring up was BS. This is... This is all part of lawfare. This is all part of the planned Klaus Schwab. We have penetrated the cabinets! And they have penetrated some of you, I fear. I hope not. And I hope that you will vote for what you know is right. Our Constitution says, and I'm talking about the U.S. Constitution, which is the supreme law of the land, that we have a right to redress our grievances against our government. What's happened to people that have done that? I mean, this is the central bankers in charge. This is what we're dealing with. And this is who the enemy of every person in this room is. Every person in this room, they are trying to absolutely 100% control your thoughts, your speech. And it doesn't matter who you vote for. It matters who counts the votes. But they want to be able to control your mind to the point where they can control who you vote for or control the flow of information that you receive so that they can control who you vote for. This is our last bastion stand for freedom. And I don't... I don't think I can just stress that enough how absolutely imperative it is that we make sure that everybody's vote is counted fairly. That did not happen in 2020. That did not happen in 2022. And it's up to you to make sure it happens in 2024. I thank this very board for standing and risking going to jail for a short period of time after backing down for refusing to certify that fraudulent 2022 election that you acknowledged was fraudulent. So do the right thing now and make sure we don't have more fraudulent elections. Thank you.
Don Martin?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Don Martin. I've lived in Mojave County for over 50 years. I've been up here many times before. I'm a veteran. I'm a retired police officer. And one of the things that I have always stood for is the rule of law. And I believe in the rule of law. And I believe that we live in a nation of laws. Now, if we don't agree with them, we have ways to address that. But to totally ignore them or to say they don't matter because this matters more than this, I don't agree with that. I look at this issue and this is Mojave County. I have heard Republicans and Democrats both say, "We have no issue in Mojave County." Now, if we don't have an issue in Mojave County, why in the hell are you spending all this time and effort to try to make an issue? The purpose of government is to solve issues, not create issues. And what is happening now is, for some reason, and I'm surprised that this has been brought up again after you all went through this time and time again. And you heard hundreds of people talking about this. And yet it's before us again today. And I kept sitting there and I'm thinking, "Why?" You asked and answered the issue a long time ago. I also know that having sitting in this room for the past year or so, nothing happens in this board that there isn't a driver behind it. Somebody is pushing a button to get it before you. And I know who this person is that's driving this. And that's okay. We each have a right to our opinion. But I also know that there's other things to consider: the cost. Your own elections director, Alan Tempert, he's the most honorable man I think I know in the world. And yet he stood up here and showed you, gave you unrefutable evidence of why this is not going to work and why it's wrong. And to your credit, before you sided with him, you said, "We believe in you, Mr. Tempert." You showed us what could be done. You showed us what was right. You showed us this is not the path to go down. So today, you're back here again. And I'm not just here to possibly defend Mr. Tempert because he don't need any defense. That man's as straight and as honest as anybody I know. And I'd go to the grave staying that. But what I'm saying is, and I understand, it's a very volatile issue. And I hope that you all in the next few minutes do the right thing. Thank you.
Lori Bevane? Or Bivock? Lori Bevane or Bivock?
Bevins.
Yes, sorry. I couldn't read the... Couldn't... Sorry for getting your last name wrong from someone that happens to you all the time. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. My name is Lori Bevins. I'm from Lake Havasu City. I'm here because I oppose this hand count. I object to the fact that this went on the agenda three days ago. I drive two and a half hours round trip to come and talk. And I don't think that was much time, three days, for everybody to come and comment. You're talking about voting today on an issue that is so serious. You know, everybody on this board backed Alan Tempert and the vote that we had in 2020. You said there was no problems in Mojave County. And so here we are for a second round about a hand count. I object to that. I object to the fact that we're going to go into possibly a hand count, spend $1.1 million, and you won't even give gas money to people to go to Flagstaff. That doesn't make any sense to me at all. Why are we fixing what's not broken? I also am concerned about the fact that my vote will not be counted and my voice will not be heard and also the other 105,000 people that are voting because we will be in litigation. And we will be in litigation for years. So how is that good? I wish that this would end and that we would run our elections because they are good elections, whether you're a Democrat, an independent, or a Republican. So please, let's put an end to this. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Morgan. I'm a Kingman resident. But I'm here today as the executive director of Real Change PAC. Now, the PAC is a nonpartisan issue-focused PAC. We have 10 common ground issues. Elections integrity is a common ground issue. It's a nonpartisan issue. So is equal protection of the Constitution. Those, I think in some ways, you can't have one without the other, right? Our elections integrity give us the people who are supposed to guarantee our constitutional protections and vice versa. I'm irritated that I have to be here today. I'm irritated that I had to get up out of my nice warm bed and come down here and talk again about the issue that was addressed before. When we were here before, you received information from county council that, you know, "We don't know if you can do this and we don't think we're going to be able to represent you because what you're doing is wrong." There were people here who spoke on every issue. I came to speak about the fact that the Constitution gives that power to the state. And Arizona State has its process in the law. Now, if you don't like it, go to the legislature and change it. But every single one of you took an oath of office that you would uphold the Constitution, that you would uphold the laws of Arizona and the United States. That's what you said. So either you lied or somehow you justify the county overreach of the state's rights because that seems to only be a problem for you when it's the federal government that's overreaching the state's rights. But for you as Mojave County, it's okay for you to usurp the state's rights. That's okay, is what you're saying when you vote yes on this stuff. And two of you did. So, Hilly, I'm going to address you specifically because you're trying to go to the legislature. And this vote is going to set you up for, if you get elected, you will not be able to rightfully say that you will uphold the Constitution. This is your moment of choice, Hilly, right here. This is your moment of truth. And I don't care what party we belong to. We should all be able to trust that our elected officials are going to uphold their basic oath of office. First and foremost, if you don't like the laws, change them. But rule of law matters. The Constitution matters. Uphold your oath of office. Thank you.
I'm still Kenneth Barth. I still live in the outskirts of Hackberry and as I was two hours ago when I last spoke. And a 10-year resident of Mojave County. I would like to start off, first of all, a statement was made by a speaker over here that the county attorney's office has declined to represent the board if they are sued. Are you able to confirm that? Are you able to confirm and waive attorney-client privilege to answer that question?
After we're done with public comment, we can certainly ask the question of the county attorney.
Because I have an additional question. Has the county attorney advised you that as an officer of the court, as an attorney, as an officer of the court in the state of Arizona, he cannot, in good faith, represent you in court making an argument that there's validity to what you would pass? And that's the reason that this attorney out of Maricopa County notified you by email. This is attorney identified as Brian James Blum. I might be mispronouncing his last name. Correct me if I'm wrong. In which he said that he would represent the county for free. And he says, "This includes any and all appeals. Any litigation will be 100% private pay." Which raises the question to me, where is the dark money going to come from? Dark money is evil and it needs to be exposed. Where will it come from? Now, I also will bring to your attention, if this is the attorney you're going to hire, lest you claim ignorance. This is the attorney that last May 4th, 2023, the Arizona Supreme Court... Do I have a... How do I... How to put this document here? Is that...
Just put it up there and the camera will go up.
This is a first page. You can get the court information, the case number. The Arizona Supreme Court sanctioned this attorney who has volunteered to represent this county for free. He was sanctioned for unequivocally filing false statements in pleadings, on multiple pleadings before the Arizona Supreme Court. I want you to tell me, this is the attorney that's going to represent you directly and me indirectly as a resident of this county? How can that be? Now, I got 25 seconds. I guess 24 seconds. I guess like an NBA game on a shot clock. Now, in 20 seconds, you are planning with this vote, from what it appears to be, from transferring a bipartisan, equal number of Republicans and Democrats in counting ballots and in the process to privatizing and outsourcing to a partisan political group of Republicans only. Now, this would work. This was done before. We're only one party. And this was done in 1937. Can we show that too? Winning with 100% of the vote was Joseph Stalin. What you would propose with only one-party counting ballots would be no different than Castro in Cuba.
Thank you, sir.
Craig Stacey? Craig Stacey? That was the last person we have to speak. I'm going to bring up Senator Borelli if he would like to make a statement as he's here in the audience in the front row.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. This is a lot to unpack, so I'm going to need more than three minutes. If I can get some latitude, please. First off, let me unpack. There's a lot of things to unpack here. So, you know, lots of comments were saying this is the very first time that anybody's ever challenged these elections only because Donald Trump lost. Well, that's a bunch of hogwash. I'm going to read something here. "Our elections were hijacked. Our election was hijacked. There is no question. Congress has a duty to protect our democracy. Follow the facts." That is dated on 5/16/17. And that was by Speaker Nancy Pelosi. The Senate, U.S. Senate, had several hearings where cyber experts were appeared in front of the U.S. Senate. And they testified that electronic voting systems are vulnerable and can be hacked. And at that time, Senator Kamala Harris had said, "This is a no-brainer. We need to go back to paper ballot, hand counts." Right before my very eyes, I saw these machines getting hacked. And my staff witnessed it too. So for somebody to say that this is only a complaint because Donald Trump lost the election is garbage. So I'm going to read another thing here. So I'm going to read another thing here. "We must give the voters the confidence that their ballot was counted and cast by supporting mandatory statistically meaningful post-election audits, and full transparency of all elections' results and data, to ensure every eligible ballot is counted. Vote-by-mail voters must be informed of and provided a meaningful opportunity to fix any problem with their ballot." That's from page 56 of the 2020 Democrat, Arizona Democratic Party platform. Everything that we found that irregularities in the 2020 election, when we had the audit, we tried to fix legislatively. Unfortunately, all the Democrats voted no, and of course, this current administration has vetoed every bill that we could have done to fix things and close loopholes that there have been exploited, to include signature verification, certifying these machines. Now, let's get back down to some facts, because there's a lot of misinformation put out there. Back in 2017, the Secretary of Homeland Security says that the elections are part of critical infrastructure, because there is a national security element to that, and that's a no-brainer. But to say that these things are certified and by experts, and there's nothing wrong... I have a document here that's dated June of '22 by the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, where they explained the vulnerabilities of Dominion Voting Systems Image Cast X summary, where they found erroneous code put on machines in Williamson, Tennessee. And this has happened in other states, not just Williamson, Tennessee. But this is CISA. And then we have the United States Election Assistance Commission report from Williamson County, Tennessee, dated March of '22, where they specified on Dominion Electronic Systems and the ESNS system, where they found erroneous code that nobody knew how it got on there, but don't worry, we fixed it. The Cochise County case, there's a lot of misinformation that's been put out there on the Cochise County case. That was about a post-election audit. So when someone says that, "We need to have... We've had audits." We haven't had audits. All these audits have actually been blocked. It was blocked by a retired association here in the state, with two Democrats from Cochise County, to block that post-election audit from Cochise County. Why? Because the statute says if the county was going to do a post-election audit, and they were going to do a 100% hand count of all their precincts, the Secretary of State shall provide the source codes to a special master that shall be provided by the court, and those findings shall be made public to the court and to the Secretary of State's office. That was to block the source codes. The Secretary of State didn't want to give out the source codes. We tried to get the source codes when we tried to do the audit, but we couldn't do it. We couldn't get it because of the proprietary. What we have here is a third-party vendor that has complete autonomy and immunity from any kind of anything.
Can I pause you for a moment? Someone's got Nature Farm going off on their phone. Can you silence that, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
So when they talk about that one group that came here from Tempe, I find it ironic that they're saying they find nothing wrong. But here, just last week, Maricopa County Elections Department has admitted they improperly certified the voting machines that failed on Election Day. They had the tabulators that were resealed, or broken seals resealed, recalibrated, and the printers recalculated, so on and so forth. We found so many irregularities recently that's being in court. And by the way, that one thing where they're talking about Brian Blem being sanctioned, that's on appeal. That's over the Carrie Lake case. But guess what? More information is coming out that's probably going to take care of that in that court. Now, Pinal County. So it's not just Maricopa County, Cochise County, that's had problems, but Pinal County. Pinal County, they have to use the SNS system. Their supervisors knew they had three separate outcomes on their county machines, three separate, and their own attorney, okay, pushed against these guys. Once again, the conversation they have to do the hand count. So, and I knew about Mays' letter coming out, because that's the same identical cut-and-paste letter that she put out to all the counties, where they're threatening and intimidating, intimidating you from making sure that you don't do your job, preventing you from doing your job, and a penalty that you'll be arrested if you don't canvass the election. How can you canvass an election and certify it if you don't know if it's certifiable? I'm proposing this. Vote yes on this, but we start with the presidential preference election. We can hand count the ballots at the precinct level, run it through the tabulators here at the central location, and now you can compare the numbers. If the numbers don't jive, you still got to go back to the paper, because the ballot is the actual affidavit of a vote. It's not a number off of a machine. That is the actual vote, not a number off of a machine.
Order.
So if you can do the... Start with a presidential preference as a pilot program to show that this can be done, and of course, if it's not feasible, or what they say impractical, then you can always go back to what is impractical. But for someone to say that there's a... It's not impractical, or it's impractical to do a hand count, is ridiculous. I have a report here from Alex Holgerman, who's a professor from... Shoot, I forget what's... Wisconsin. This is a report that was commissioned by the Democrats, that was sealed by a federal judge, and in it, he names 16 states that are vulnerable to electronic voting systems, okay? Arizona's named in one of those. And this was naming that in 2020. So to say that there's nothing here, and we need to follow the law... I agree, we need to follow the law. The state legislature, we tried to pass legislation to put this in law, but we passed a resolution because under the U.S. Constitution, time, place, and manner, Article 1, Section 4 of the U.S. Constitution, and we did pass a resolution identifying all the vulnerabilities over the last two elections, that we need to make sure that we have better standards for our electronic voting systems. So my suggestion is, we do a hand count and run it through a tabulator. Guess what? That's complying with the law, because now you're using the tabulators, which is electronic, and you can do the hand count, and it verifies. When you go to the bank and you get money, they count out the money in front of you, and then, of course, they run it through a tabulator. And there's no reason why to have... It checks and balances with this, because the most valuable thing as American citizen you have is your right to vote, and that ballot is your currency as an American citizen. Thank you. I'll take questions.
Sucrez Rangus.
Well, thank you, and thank you for cutting to the chase about the PPE, the Presidential Preference Election, which is coming up in March. And that would be actually the most prudent thing to do, because it is one election. Now, I have to just say on the record that hand counting is not easy-peasy. It's not sitting down for the table and going through it. It's much more confident. There's statutes that we have to abide by. We have to have checks and balances. So we're blessed this year that we do have this PPE. That is one election. So I want to ask Ryan Esplin, because when we actually did a trial of hand counts, and I got to see it, and it was really eye-opening. That's how I know that it's not as easy as some people think it is. But we were told during that meeting, and subsequently, I think even up here, that we cannot do both. We can't hand count and then run it through the tabulator. It has to be one or the other, which I don't understand. I mean, I can understand why, if we do a hand count and certify the hand count, and then run it through the machine, that would be... That might be messy, because if the numbers don't match up, then you throw the legitimacy of the whole election. So I get that. So why can't we do both, especially in the presidential preferences? Is it because of who's paying for it? I mean, if the party was just paying for it, would we have more leeway, Senator Borelli? Could that happen? Is it because that it's a government-funded thing?
Well, actually, you can do 100% hand count, and you can... There's that feasibility, or what they call impracticality, that they try to say clause. We've already identified impracticality to even use the machines, but I say you can use both. But, you know, in here on Arizona 16602, we're actually an Attorney General's letter stating that you can do, you know, the 4%, or 2%, then 5%. And if you need to expand that, you can go to 50%. If you have to expand it even more, until you're like comfortable to say, "Okay, we can do the machine as a primary." But there's no reason why you can't do a hand count. Example, you do the hand count at the precinct level, you seal them up, they come up here to the county, run them through a tabulator. There's nothing in statute that prevents that. Nothing in statute that prevents... I've checked with my staff, I've checked with our Senate attorneys, I've checked with Ledge Council. There's nothing to prevent that from doing a hand count and then running it through a tabulator.
Can I ask...
Because we're different than the other counties. They use a touchscreen thing. That's what Cochise does.
Right. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I think there's still misunderstanding about when we say machines. There's a couple of different machines in elections. There's the one where they go to the voting center, and you press it, and it spits out a ballot. That's the one that Maricopa had so many problems with. Yeah.
No, they had printers on demand.
Yeah, they had printers. That's what I meant. It printed out after you put it in. It prints it out. That's where they... We don't have that. We have... I think we may have it for like ADA, if, or something like that, but it's used very, very rarely. What we're talking about is the actual tabulators. So I agree that there is a lot of... There's a lot of problems with our elections. And to me, they begin and end with mail ballots. But once those mail ballots come in, and they're checked, and they come out of the envelope, and they're put in a pile, you're just, you know, counting them. So you have to separate the two. This wouldn't be the end-all of solving everything, right, Senator Borelli? Because our problems are very deep in voter rolls and in mail-in ballots, and who's registered to vote. We don't, here in Mojave County, we don't send out to everybody like they do in some other counties, because, you know, we are conservative. That would be a definite... No, no, never go for that. But I don't see why we can't. Like, what's the harm in doing the presidential preference election, which is one race? It gets more complicated when there are more races involved. And let's know once and for all. And if it's a matter of law, like the Attorney General said, let's fight it out in court. Let's see, you know, what it is. Because I've been hearing from the second we started talking about these ballot counts, I've heard so many different legal opinions about this. And just because it comes from the Attorney General, it doesn't mean that that's the end-all. You know, there is a higher... There's a higher court than that. And so I would be... I think it's very prudent to start with the PPE. We can always, if that... If we see, because there's going to be a lot of things that happen that we have no idea, like we cannot anticipate. But this is a good way of doing it, because it's not going to be races that are going to be contested very much. It's actually the perfect way to do it.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Supervisor Angus. You're right. There's so many different ways we do the election. There's the in-person early voting, and then there's the one that get mailed in, and they go right to the county. And those signatures got to be cured and all that kind of stuff, and they do that there through the recorder. But the in-person early voting, it can be done very easily, as the process goes along, because we can start tabulating 14 days prior to Election Day. So that can be done. So when people say, "You can't do this, you can't do that," I'm like, well, can't means won't, in my book. But getting back to... There was the other thing you had mentioned, the Attorney Mays, just the, yeah, Attorney General Mays. Pretty much, there's a lot of things that she put in that thing, and the one thing that I do highly agree with is the way that they mentioned in here that they're using as example of it, Mojave County did this, you know, hand count demonstration, and it was a nightmare, and this and... I totally agree. I totally... I agree with Alan. That is the... You're right. That's the dumbest way to do it in the first place. Why would you have the same eight people doing the entire down ballot? There are multiple ways to be able to do this in a very, very efficient way. And I've got a crew, a team, that's willing to come out to Mojave County and set up and do training, so they can actually do it, you know, train everybody for the PPE, but they can actually train them to do an entire, whole down ballot of 40 different races in a very efficient timeframe. And that's the kind of training I want to have set up here, so that just in case, you know, we survive in court, and you can be... It can be able to be done. But if it can't be done, you have the power to turn things off at the last minute than you do turning it on at the last minute. So I'm asking for your yes vote to, let's get this ball rolling, and let's see where it goes.
Sucrez Rangus.
Thank you. I have questions for Alan Temper, but I'm sure the board has things to...
Chair, or I was going to say Senator Borelli, there's been some questions about why this is back on the agenda, and I just want to tell people that I was the one that placed that. The reason I placed that is because I said to Sonny Borelli, if he got through the... Because we're going to get sued if this goes forward. We're going to get sued. If he covers the legal costs, and if he can guarantee that he has the volunteers, then my commitment, the level of my commitment, is just to put this back on the board for the agenda for the board to consider. So my commitment is fulfilled to you. We're having this discussion now.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may also, to that point, you can pretty much count on Amika's brief from the Senate and the House of Representatives supporting the county.
All right. Open up to the board. Order, please. Sucrezer Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've heard a lot about the infallibility of voting machines here today. Let me relay a story to you. In 2005, I was your Arizona State Senator. In the 2004 Republican primary, we had a race for the House of Representatives for the second seat in the GOP primary. That race for the second seat, since it's a pick-two position, fell within the margin of error for a recount. When it was recounted by Maricopa County, it flipped 250 votes. So you went from one gentleman being the representative or the Republican nominee to the other gentleman being the Republican nominee. After much wailing and gnashing of teeth, we were able to get the Senate president to give us some money. We hired a voting machine expert from the University of Iowa. He then took those voting machines and ran them through a series of tests. One of those voting machines was 18% out of calibration and should never have been used. So much for the infallibility of voting machines. We... I hear talk of, "We don't have problems in Mojave County." How would we know? How would we know? When I requested the vote log, they would not give it to me, because law doesn't allow us to have it. So essentially, we canvass on what Alan tells us. And that's how we've done it. When we try to get deeper, I get letters from the Secretary of State saying, "Gould, we're going to throw you in jail." I got a letter... Now, I get a letter again today saying, "We're going to throw you in jail." Why are they so afraid of this? Why are they so afraid? You know, I don't see the fear. As Senator Borelli mentioned, if you looked back through history, we've seen other people complain about election voting machines. You go back to the hanging Chad issue from the 2000 election between Bush and Gore. You go back to the '16 election between Hillary Clinton and Donald Trump. There's complaints about voting improprieties. Generally, it's who loses complaints, because if you're one, you're probably not going to complain. But these machines are not infallible. They do get hooked to the internet. They're updated through the internet. So much from not being connected to the internet. My biggest concern here today is folks are losing faith in our elections. That is my biggest concern. They don't think that their vote counts. That's why I'm willing to do this. That's why I'm willing to risk that I'm going to get thrown in jail. So all those folks that told me that they would have bailed me out if I went to jail before, I might be needing you to come bail me out today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I may add to that point.
Senator Borelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Supervisor Gould. You're right. And if this is the one exercise we can actually get done, is encourage people to get involved with their elections, because the elections belong to the people, not to us. If they get involved, and they'll have a mission. They get involved, they're going to be more prone to be making sure that the integrity is going to be maintained, but it's a good turnout. It's a mission. And there's one better way to do it, to say, "Hand count, run it through a tabulator, everything jives. Here it is." We're... Mojave County is flawless, or dang near flawless. But this is the best way to prove it. This is the best way to... We can't do an audit on the back end, because there's always that timeframe that you... After an election, there's that window to get things challenged in a court case, or this or that. Things get thrown out, because you don't have standing. And I don't understand how a candidate doesn't have standing in an election lawsuit. But anyway, thank you.
I just want some clarity here. You're saying that you want to do them simultaneously? Hand count, then after that, run them through the tabulators before certification? You want both before certification?
Mr. Chair and Supervisor Angus, I'm thinking... I think logistically. That's what I did in the Marines. If you hand count at the precinct level, you seal them up. They can always get... They got to be sealed before they get transported to the county. The county has a tabulation system. It's all central tabulation. There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to do a hand count at the precinct level. There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to do a hand count at the precinct level, have the, uh, the election officers there, s- you know, sign it, seal it off, whatever, sending it up to county. I suggest if you're in precinct A, you should be counting precinct B and vice versa. All those people need to sign an NDA, a non-disclosure agreement, because if they release that information out, it is a felony. And I don't think anybody wants to go to jail just because they wanna be a know-it-all, cause I know the outcome, but you, you have, there's a lot of security ways of doing it. But I'd say it'd be easy to do it at the, at the precinct level, cause they're smaller, and then send it to the central tabulation.
That's where the legal question comes in. Because we were told that we couldn't do that.
Attorney Esplin, or do you, or perhaps our county attorney that's in the audience, do you wanna give us your legal take on this again?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chairman, League of Felters, members of the Board. The first question about the presidential preference election, I'll refer you to 16241. 16241 specifies that for a presidential preference election, you follow the same election laws. Section C specifically states, except as provided in that particular article, the presidential preference election shall be conducted and canvassed in the same manner as prescribed in this title for the primary election. All provisions of other laws that govern elections and that are not in conflict with this article apply to a presidential preference election. So basically, you have to follow the same election laws in the presidential preference election as you would in the primary, as well as in the general election. So then that comes down to the question is, can you hand count? Because you can't say, we can do it in the presidential preference election, but we can't do it in the other ones because the same laws apply. And so that comes down to the analysis that the Attorney General has provided to the, to the Board, that letter. And we've also done our own analysis. The county attorney's office, I've, I've participated in it, my staff have done it as well. We've talked to the, the county attorney, Matt Smith, about it. First and foremost, you always gotta look to, what is the county authority? What authority does the county have? Because the, the authority that we have is derived from the legislature. The legislature only gives us the, gives the county authority that it can use. So it has to be spelled out in statute or necessarily implied. That's the legal standard. There is no statute that specifically authorizes the Board to do a hand count. And that's why we say, we do not believe you can do a hand count, because there's no statute that authorizes it. So then the next question is, is there any statute that says they're necessarily implied? There are some. If you look at 16443 and 16445, those are common ones that, that people in support of a hand count will cite. Because if you look at those, there's some suggestion that you may use the machine equipment. Well, if you may use a machine equipment, that implies that you could hand count it. That's the argument. But I also look at 162, 16622, where it says, after you get the vote, after you count the vote from the vote tabulating equipment, that becomes the official canvas that, that is presented to the Board. There, plus, if you look at 16602, the hand count audit, there's specific provisions about hand counting after the fact. Well, that suggests that the legislature knows very well that they can put in a hand count, and if they didn't put it in there, well, they probably, you probably can't do it. If you also look at the Elections Procedures Manual, there are all kinds of rules in there about vote tabulating equipment and how to use the machines to count the, the votes. There's hardly anything in there at all about counting by hand, because the implication is, it's not authorized by statute. The only time, if you go, if there's, the only time that the manuals talks about hand counting on the front end is if it is impracticable, which is, it, it's a stat, there's a statute that allows that. If it's impracticable, then you can do the hand count. So there's a lack, additionally, there's a lack of guidance on hand counts. And so if you look at it, the statutes, and if you look at the laws, there's hardly anything there that suggests that you can hand count it. And if it's not there, you're not authorized to do it. That's why our advice to you is, take the safe route and use the machines, because we know those are legal, we know the law, the law says very clear, this is what we do, and Alan Temper does an excellent job of following those procedures to ensure that the, that the machines are operating properly, and we know that's legal. We absolutely are positive 100% that that is legal, and so we follow that. There was a suggestion that you could base, you could do this based on the Senate resolution that was passed. I do not recommend that you follow that, that advice. That Senate resolution will not authorize you to, to do the hand count. It doesn't. And, and the law's clear in that regard. So for these reasons, well, I'll give you six other reasons. One, Arizona law clearly allows for machine counting, but it doesn't clearly allow for hand counting. Two, county staff can safely and efficiently conduct the, the, the machine count. It's not very clear if we can do that on a hand count. Three, Arizona law allows for pre and post-election logic and accuracy testing for the machines. Conversely, versus the hand count, we don't, we don't know what the policies are. There are procedures for machine counting. We, we're really kind of flying by the seat of our pants, so to speak, for policies for hand counts. There's an increased cost of hand count. There's also a lack of accuracy potentially from the hand count. Finally, we are worried about a disenfranchisement of, of county voters, if you can't complete the canvas in time. If we can't get it done in time, there is a worry that they can do that. Finally, we do have concerns about, um, if somebody saying that they will cover all legal costs and things. Our advice is, make sure you get it in writing. Get it, if you could, get some kind of a retainer, bond, you name it, whatever kind of form to say, okay, the costs will be, will be covered. Now, the final question, at least the final issue that was addressed during the discussion was whether the county attorney's office will represent the Board or not. I've researched the issue of what, what are the responsibilities and duties of the county attorney as well as the county Board? And we absolutely respect the decisions of the Board of Supervisors. It is a privilege and an honor to represent you. And I can say that, and I've, I've always been proud to represent you. Our, the county attorney's responsibility is to provide advice to this Board. And I'm sorry, Scotty, we can't, we can't take away that responsibility. It is the county's attorney's responsibility to advise the Board. Now, if there's litigation lawsuits, the Board can choose their own path. There are times when the county attorney and the, and the Board of Supervisors will have a different opinion as to how things should happen. And you're more than welcome to hire private counsel to do that. We, we, we do that all the time. We, we hire outside counsel all the time, and that's perfectly permissible, perfectly legal, and that is within the Board's discretion to do that. It would be my recommendation to my, to my boss, the county attorney, that we not, that the county attorney not represent the Board if you voted in favor of this. And we say that with the utmost respect, because I do have a difference of opinion that doesn't mean, look, like you said, the county attorney may be wrong, the Attorney General may be wrong, but this is the way I'm looking at it from a legal perspective. We also have concerns about potential conflicts of interest, because, you know, do we represent the Board? What about the Recorder? And what about county staff? So that could potentially create a conflict of interest. So, our recommendation would be, if you do vote in favor of it, to, um, hire outside counsel to do that. But our recommendation first and foremost is to not approve this measure.
Additional discussion from the Board members?
May I address one issue?
Senator Burley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I wanna just spell out the difference between the AG's letter and the actual statute under 16621, paragraph C. If you read that letter, but here's the actual statute. If for any reason, it becomes impractical for a, to count all, all or part of the ballots with tabulating equipment, the officer in charge of elections may direct that they be counted manually, following as far as proscribable with provisions governing the counting of paper ballots. It can be done.
What's the definition of impracticable?
You can, you're, actually, you're describing, you're...
See, I think what you've touched on is, is one of the things that, I wanna, I wanna throw out two things. First and foremost, I do believe that it should be citizens, voting machines or ballots, hand counting ballots, it's an instrument to, to do an election. And I think, just as a, as a principle, that citizens should tell government what method and instrument that they wanna use for elections. And it shouldn't be government the other way around telling citizens which they should use, right? So that's the first and foremost thing. The second thing that I have a real problem with, and nobody has an answer right now, yet we're getting threats to get thrown in jail, is that, you know, there are suggestions, but no definitive legal ruling stating shall or may. And counties, I think, um, because my read is the Arizona Constitution basically puts the authority for elections in the Arizona Legislature's lap, and the Arizona Legislature has delegated conduct of elections to the counties. But then, at that point, counties aren't given any sort of specific, you know, like specificity in, in guidance related to conducting elections. It's just, may, or, you know, you have to define what's not practical or what is practical. Um, and then if you do the wrong guess, you might get thrown in jail. Right? So...
Well, to me, I respond to that, I mean, that's what, that's what tyrants do before they throw you in the Gulag, right? Either comply or we're throwing you in the jail.
I, I have a couple of questions for County Recorder's Office. Um, we might call you back up in just a second, Senator Burley. My questions are, the last couple of elections, I know you've been there for a while now, and maybe you have the answers and maybe you don't, but, um, voter participation rate in Mojave County in our last election, what was the voter participation rate?
I ran some numbers for this morning in regards to the presidential preference elections. The presidential preference election, you have to be registered as the party to participate. So going back to 2012, the Republican Party and the Green Party were eligible to participate. 17,000 people voted, eight of them voted, 8,000 of them voted early. The 2020 Democrats were the only one eligible to vote. 9,382 voted, 700, or I'm sorry, 7,882 voted early. I skipped 2016 in there.
What, what percentage of our registered voters turned out? Do you know that percentage? I, I thought the last time I had heard, it was maybe half of the registered voters. Is that accurate or not accurate?
Depending on the election, but if you're looking at the general of 22, is that...
Sure.
I would say closer to half participated.
Half.
Majority of voters vote early, 70%.
But only half in Mojave County, which is, who were elected to represent, voted.
Correct.
Basically. So, I, I raised that question, because I try to look at things that are within my circle of control. And if you look at the, if you are concerned with who lost the presidential race and the governor's race and Secretary, you know, or the Attorney General's race, those were really narrow margins. What would an additional, you know, 10% or 15% or 20% of registered Mojave County voters, if they actually showed up to the polls? What would that do to counteract what they do in, in Maricopa County? You would have won four races. So that's within our circle of control. So no matter what happens here, I hope that we, we do whatever we have to do, no matter what political party we are affiliated with, or maybe we're no-party affiliation independent voters, but, um, if we all truly believe that, that trust in voting is a nonpartisan issue, then we all need to band together to try to make sure that everybody is able to get to the polls. I mean, do ride share, make sure people are getting registered, um, take the day off and, and just be like, uh, an Uber for people that, that have problems getting to the polls, taking them to the polls. Help people show out, show up, because I truly believe, um, even if there's, there's screwy stuff going on in Mojave County's voter machines, clearly it's breaking into the Republicans' favor, because we don't lose races here. So I think that whatever they do in Maricopa, that's not within our circle of control. If we can just get 10, 15, 20% additional voter turnout in Moj- in Mojave County, then we can counteract anything silly that goes on in Maricopa. I think that's important to say. And so I really hope that people get out to the polls this next year.
May I share?
Please.
One additional. So, my, since being appointed as the County Recorder, um, I've taken it as my own goal to give voters information. I think knowledge is power. Voters need to know how they can vote, when they can vote. On the camera here is going to be a postcard that was mailed out on Friday to about 50,000 voters. These voters are not eligible for the presidential preference election. This here tells them that they're not with a party that's participating, the Republican or Democratic Party, and gives them deadlines when they would need to either re-register and change that party, or they know that they wouldn't be eligible.
Supervisor Johnson.
Hey, is this a party election? What do we care if they're non, non-party or libertarian or whatever else? We're soliciting them to become part of the Dems or Republicans to vote for who I wanna represent me? I don't understand that part. Maybe it's because we're taking too long in this meeting, but...
We're almost outta here.
By state statute, we're only required to notify 90 days, 90 days before an election to people on the active early voting list. We've always fulfilled that state statute requirement, but in addition to anyone that's not on the active early voting list, registered with those parties, will receive an almost identical notice, um, as well going out in December to Republicans and Democrats, telling them if they wanna get a ballot by mail, voting early or Election Day.
Thank you. I, I have one more question for the attorney. If I heard you right, there's been a whole lot of information thrown out. Um, did I hear you correctly in saying that the Board, um, or as Senator Borelli had suggested, we, we cannot just do a hand count for the presidential preference election, right? It has to be either all or none, and then if we're gonna take that gamble, we have to have some sort of a justified business case that it's impracticable?
Yes, so, so it is all or nothing, like you said, the way you, you would phrase that. And, and then the impracticability comes into play if you, if the machines are no longer, if they're impracticable, then you do the hand count. So, let's say, um, on Election Day, there's, uh, I don't know, some windstorm comes through and shuts down everything and you, you can't count. So there would, that, that's when the impracticability would come into play and you hand count. And you, you raised a good question. What does impracticability mean? I, that's for the lawyers to argue and decide, you know? I, I've never seen a case where it is, but, I mean, it would have to be, the machines, it's no longer impracticable to use them, so now you use, now you hand count.
Whatever that means. I, I don't know if, um, our Elections Director, um, wants to say anything or not. Alan, did you wanna say anything, or did you wanna just? You're welcome to come down if you'd like to. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Alan, thank you.
I, I have a question.
Supervisor Angus.
I have a question for you, Alan, sorry. Sorry. Kind of a cut and dry answer, I hope. When we were here last time, you said it was gonna cost 1.1 million, but we never really got a breakdown of, of why it was gonna cost that. So if you can do it quickly, like break it down into how you came up with that number?
Absolutely. Uh, actually, in the report, I kinda have it broken down, but I will explain that. It'd be absolutely wonderful. I'm getting old, I need my glasses. Now, the estimated additional cost for all three elections, line item number one is fairgrounds, camu security system installation cost. Fairgrounds, I just kinda, okay? It's nothing to do with renting the fairgrounds. I've heard many a people say that. Yes, we do own the fairgrounds. It doesn't cost anything to rent the fairgrounds. But to put in a camera system, which is required, a camera system is required during ballot tabulation, as is in my office right now, where people watch streaming of what goes on constantly, from the time the first ballot is put in the, until the last ballot is out, that would cost, we've got a, we got an estimate, let's put it that way. You know, I don't got it down on paper, but I walked through to people, it was about $100,000 to do the camera system and the infrastructure needed. It's true.
Order please.
Okay, new full-time election staff member, I had a $75,000, I would include benefits and, and whatever to do this, because this is a pretty big task. This is a pretty... This is a pretty big task that we can't put, I can't throw it into myself or amongst my staff that we currently have. It's just, it, it just can't be done. I need, thank you.
But let's just whittle this down to the presidential preference election. With one, one race, what, how do you see that going down? And Senator Borelli talked about doing it at the precinct level, having people there. I mean, have, have you thought about that, what that would look like?
Very much. And I won't get deep. Now, I have information concerning the presidential preference election. The presidential preference election would not be an expensive, would not be expensive to do. It's a whole different animal than a primary, the general election. We are going to have two parties participating, the Republican Party and the Democratic Party. We will have, I'm expecting about 40,000 ballots to be counted between the two parties to do so. It is one race. It is one race for the, you know, presidential electors, you know, for either, you know, for either one of the ballots. That would go relatively quick, and that would be accurate. I have no doubt about that. It's really simple to do that. It wouldn't cost a whole lot of money whether I would employ people to do so. The method I was implying before, about seven people per to do it. Some of us have seen what I went through, and I think, I hope people think it's logical to do that. Okay? So that would not be very expensive. Now, back in the olden days, ballots were tabulated at the voting polls. Yes, they were.
They were.
That's the only way it was done. It was only a paper ballot. The last paper ballot I seen was 1962. I don't know if we had them after that. I wasn't here. I was one-year-old at that time. Okay? 1962, it's hanging on the wall in my office right now. And, so I know at least we had a paper ballot with X's. These days, our ballots have more items on them because it's the economy. When the legislature some years ago, I don't know if Supervisor Gould was involved in that at the time, or Senator Borelli, I'm not exactly sure, but when we consolidated elections some years ago, to save money, not more and more stuff went on the ballot, okay? Which makes it more complicated to, you know, to count. Got that, okay? So if we were to go back, so now, years ago, my analogy is, Kingman may have had a big election 50 years ago, or 100 years, you know, say whatever, okay? When we didn't have the population we have now, or the registered voters, you know, and people going out and voting. And if you had 50 people vote, and there were less races on the ballot, because special districts and things like that were not on the ballots, and school districts, they were on other, they were on other ones. And they would close the doors, and they would start counting after a 13-hour day. Yeah, they got it done, but the Lord only knows how accurate it was. You don't know. Okay? You don't know, because there was no check to see that, what that was. Okay? Okay, so you just assumed it was the best thing that they had. If we were to do that right now, and I have three voting precincts that vote over 2,000 people in 13 hours on Election Day in Mojave County, and I were to ask this group of people, or anybody, to open, close the doors at 7 o'clock at night, we're talking a full ballot, we're not talking presidential, I'm just trying to go the feasibility, okay? Or even a presidential preference, actually, because now I'm going to train 400 people on how to tally ballots and how to correctly do them, and then turn the results into us, we'll say on Election Night, you know, to, to get them to us. It's, it would just be, it's not feasible or possible anymore with the volume that we have to do. So that's, that, that, that's it. I, it, that's it.
Right, but again, I was just talking about the presidential preference.
I got you.
And I, I understand. I was with you when we did the hand count, and that's why I say, I don't like saying, you know, you, you don't understand. It is, but we only saw one way of doing it. I know that there are other ways of doing it. There are groups who have really studied it, and Senator Borelli has offered to bring them in, but at this point, I, I don't really see the harm in doing the presidential preference election. And then, at least, you know, we, we know the state's going to have a problem, and, and then let's just settle it once and for all. Let it go to the court, and it's, when it goes through the courts, we're going to be, we're going to have to accept what the court says. Right now, we're getting so many different opinions from so many different lawyers. I think we'd be doing the state a good thing, we'd be doing the voters. The voters want to know, my constituents want to know, you know? It is a big thing. It's not a small thing. And, and if it, if it helps voters' faith in elections, then it would all be worth it, because I'm telling you, you know it, we all know it sitting here. We know a lot of people who say, you know, "I'm just not going to vote because my vote doesn't count." At this point, it doesn't even matter why they're saying that, whose fault it is, but that's the thing. So if we can do this one small thing, and if we can compare it, and if they come out great, you know, together, fine, we can say, "Look, we did it, we did this test run," and, and go with it. But at the end of the day, it will be decided in a court.
It's a pleasure of the board. Thank you, Alan. Supervisor Gould.
I don't think that you can plan to only do it in the presidential preference election because we're required to treat that the same as the other election, so if we're going to do it, we just need to do it. If we have to then backpedal, if something catastrophic goes wrong, we'll then have to backpedal.
We can do that.
I believe you could.
I'd like to get a legal opinion on that.
The, the legal opinion is, if it's, if it's legal to do the hand count in one, it's one election, it's legal to do it in all of them. And, and if it's not legal to do it in one, you can't do it in any of them either. It's all or nothing, as we stated before. And the, the, the arguments, I'm more persuaded by the arguments the attorney general is making than I am with some of the counterarguments that I've seen. And I, I, I'm of the opinion that you have a really, you have an uphill battle to win in court on the hand count argument. I wouldn't take that chance, and so I recommend that you vote against it.
But the, the question was...
I'm sorry.
If we decide to go to a hand count model, and then it catastrophically fails at the presidential preference election, or we have some kind of a reason that we decide that we want to go back to machines, there would be nothing that would prevent us from taking another vote to go back to machines.
That's correct, but only that's assuming if the hand count is legal in the first place. So, yes, yes, you're correct. There is, but that's assuming that the hand count is legal. And, and that's the part where I get hit, where I get tripped up on.
If we vote to only do the presidential preference election, they're going to throw it out on that, that we didn't apply the same standard to all elections. So they'll toss it on that, and they won't even take up the question of the hand count.
No, I, I think that, I think that if, if the court says it's legal to do a hand count, then you can, you can toggle between the two. If, assuming the court says it's legal, so you do the presidential preference election, and you say, "Well, we did it, but we didn't like how it went, so we can go back," so you could toggle back to the other one.
Right.
That's, again, assuming that it's legal in the first place.
Right, but if we were to only pass, pass it for the presidential election, the court would then, we would, the attorney general would sue us...
Correct.
And claim that you're not treating the presidential preference election the same as the general election, and then toss it out on that, and we would never get to court to answer the question of, is the hand count legal?
I, I don't know. I don't know if they would go that. That's, that's an interesting question. I don't know if they'd answer that one, so.
Thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop.
I just wanted to point out that the letter that you received from the attorney Brian James Blum, I understand that he has been sanctioned by the Arizona Supreme Court for making false statements, and that he has been delegated by the county general's office for, you know, I can't hear you.
Okay, let me, let me do that again. Thank you, I'm sorry. So the letter that you received from the attorney Brian James Blum that says he will represent this board if the county attorney will not, he's been sanctioned by the Arizona Supreme Court for making false statements. He is currently under investigation by the attorney general's office on charges related to conduct, which could cause him to be disbarred. And he says Scott's still a divorce attorney by trade, so, you know what? I probably won't need the service, his services, because I'm not changing my vote, but the rest of this board may consider a different attorney.
Senator Borelli, I think you were the one that arranged for Mr. Blum to submit that letter. Do you have any comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's actually other attorneys that can step up if he's not available. It's because the funding is already in place.
Supervisor Angus.
Speaking of funding, I think it's important, if this was a Democrat thing going on, I'd ask who's funding it? I've asked when we had that hydrogen thing, who's funding this, Senator Borelli?
It's private individuals, not organizations.
It's all private donors?
Yes.
Where's the money?
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop.
I'd like to ask Senator Borelli, where's the money? Is it in an account? Is it in somebody's shoe? I'd like to know where the money is, in case we need it.
That's between the attorneys and them, so.
So you don't know?
I, I can't disclose that.
You can't disclose it, or you don't know?
It's between the attorney and the donors.
You don't know?
Yeah, I don't, I actually don't know the names, but I know the money's there.
You know the money's there? How do you know that?
Because I was told the money's there.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Order, order.
Senator Borelli?
Supervisor Angus, yeah, and then we'll wrap up here pretty quickly.
Okay. So who, who is the client? If we're not paying, who really calls the shots?
You're the client.
Not the people who are paying? What if the people who are paying want to...
He's got, he's got donor, donors to, to fund this, just like the Cochise County case, that was privately funded.
But he would be our lawyer?
Yes.
And he would do what we want him to do?
Supervisor Angus, yes, yes.
I could jump in real quick on that.
Attorney Esplin.
So, I mean, it, it's not uncommon that someone else will pay for the legal fees of the client. The, the responsibility is between the attorney and the client. When I was in private practice, it happened on occasion, a juvenile case. I, I'd take on a juvenile representation and the parents would pay for it. That's a, that, that happens almost very, very commonly. A divorce, the, somebody else is going to pay for the legal fees for one party to get the divorce. It does raise just, just, it's problematic, it's difficult. It's difficult for the attorney, because the attorney, the attorney's duties are to the client, but they're getting paid from somebody else. So it's, yeah, it's not something I'm all, I was really keen on doing when I was in private practice, but it's certainly permissible, but you have to follow some rules to make sure that it's done properly. But the relationship would be between the attorney and the client. But again, you know, you've got to look at who's going to pay for the legal fees, okay? You got that. But what if there's any fines against the county? Who's going to pay for that? What about the statute that the attorney general cited? What about personal liability? If, if there's personal liability, you're personally liable, who's going to pay for that? I mean, that's what, that statute that they're citing, 35212, 212C, personal liability for, for the use of public funds, if there's anything there, you've got to look at that. I mean, this is, we, the county attorney's office has real concerns about that aspect of this, is who's paying for this, how it's going to be paid, who's going to do it? I mean, it's, it's tricky, to say the least.
Mr. Chair, do we have a motion? We can discuss something moving forward.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that Mojave County move to a hand-counting method of ballot tabulation beginning at the presidential preference election of 2024.
I have a question.
Supervisor Bishop.
We have a letter from Jeanne Kentsch, the chairwoman of the Republican Party, stating there's 300 volunteers committed. Do we have a, do we have a list of who those people are, so that... If there's somebody that has, has a list, I'd like to hear from them. I mean, I, I find it hard to believe we have 13 people committed to working months on this for nothing.
We do have a motion on the floor. If somebody would like to second that, we can continue with discussion.
I'll second it.
All right. Supervisor Bishop, do you want to call the gentleman down to talk about his list?
No, you have a motion now, and it's been seconded, so let's just vote.
I'd like a little discussion for goodness, Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
I don't know what we plan on proving by checking on an election that we all agreed with had no problems at all. And the presidential preference, like Alan said, is not going to make a difference because that's just one issue. Alan's saying he can't do the, the general or the primary election at time allotted. It's brought up that probably our people wouldn't have their votes counted. I also have great concerns with who are elected to represent the people of Mojave County. And in that position, when we have a county attorney who's elected, we have an election director who we hired, and we're not taking their advice and saying, "Well, we'll ignore their advice and go out to some attorney I've never heard of," not saying he's a good attorney or a bad attorney, I've never heard of this guy, and, and a promise of money coming somewhere later, I think we're risking all the taxpayers of Mojave County, and I don't think it's a good move on our part, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Harry Nunn will call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So what's the vote?
I'm going to vote no. We're adjourned.